To represent, I believe, but we'll get there as quickly as we can. So, now on the record, the opening statement is as follows. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment, which is being held on Wednesday, the 28th of February, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the municipal complex. pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this regular meeting has been provided by prominently displaying the schedule of regular meetings on the official notice board in the municipal complex, and by transmitting a copy of this schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, the Trenton Times, the Trentonian, and Comcast Cable of New Jersey Incorporated. A copy was also filed with the Clerk of Princeton. Could you call the roll for us, please, Claudia?
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Mr. Cohen? Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Dabich? Mr. Floy?
Here.
Mr. Ockman? Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum? Mr. Balvannes?
President.
Chairman Royce?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Our first administrative matter is to affirm a resolution which we have just used that says that we change the schedule of our regular meetings to make today, rather than last week, the regular meeting. So I think we don't need too much formality for this. What I would like is a voice vote by the Board. Those in favor of this amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, any abstentions, so the ayes have it. So, we are now allowed to meet today formally. We now have some resolutions of memorialization to go through, and some minutes to affirm. The minutes of December the 16th, 2017, were sent out to you. Are there any needed changes to those minutes? If not, can I have a motion to affirm them as presented, and a second to that motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Could you call the roll for us, please, Claudia?
Sure, one second. Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson? Yes. Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Balvannes?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Here.
Thank you.
Now, we have a resolution. The first one is for 117 Terhune Road, and it carries the case number Z1717-529.
Board members, before you...
Sorry?
Before you vote on that resolution tonight, I wanted to raise something to your attention. We received a request from one of the neighbors who appeared last month to express concerns about drainage. And that neighbor has asked, would the Board consider adding a condition that requires the applicant to add a trench drain to facilitate driveway drainage, which would be reviewed and approved by the municipal engineer? The applicant's attorney, Mr. Schatzman, is here tonight. He's advised, he has no difficulty with that because I believe it was discussed at the meeting, and the applicant indicated they would be willing to do that. So, would the Board consider adding that as an additional condition to the resolution? That would be...
The additional condition...
Being that the applicant...
Refers to drainage?
Yes.
But that's a view of the town engineer automatically.
Well...
And that was made very clear in the meeting two or three times.
It was. That is correct.
So it's a condition that is there and doesn't need to be on paper, as far as I would think. But if it's possible to add it after the fact, which I don't think it should be...
I did go back at, once the person made the request, to check the record, and it was on the record that they did offer to put a trench drain in.
Yes.
So, I mean, I don't see any harm in adding it to the findings. I agree with you that typically it's up to the stormwater management plan, but it's...
So you're suggesting that it's a bit...
It's not a big...
Appropriate for us to do that?
Yes, it's okay.
As it was in the...
Yes, sir.
The record of the meeting.
Yes.
Okay, so, with that addition, to the case, then, do we have any additional changes we need to make to this? If so, if not, a motion and a second. And then our attorney can allow those to vote who are permitted to vote.
I move approval.
I second.
And with the additional condition as stated by our attorney, Ms. Casey, and agreed to by the applicant's attorney.
I still second.
That's okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Could you...
I will. Mr. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
The next case is 48 Cleveland Lane, and that carried the number Z1717-550. Do we have any changes to this one? If not, is there a motion to approve as presented, and a second to the motion?
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. Could you call them, please?
I will. Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
And so the last of these resolutions is for 162 Linden Lane, and that carries the Are there any needed changes to this? We've, actually, in the description, we've talked about a D1 permit, a D1 to permit the continued use of T2, and then it should be two-unit residential dwellings, rather than as on our menu it says, two, three units, but the third unit had been removed from each of those buildings. So do we have a motion to approve as presented?
Do we say it that way, approve the denial, or is that, how is it worded?
We approve the denial, yes. We approve this thing as it stands. Yeah.
So moved.
So we have a motion and a second.
Second.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
And now we come to the moment you've all been waiting for, which is the Princeton First Aid and Rescue Squad. It has the file number Z1717-542UP. I'm not quite sure we need, Mr. Bridger normally puts into the record the opinion that was sent out to the Board. Are you...
Well, in this case, I've asked our town planner, Lee Solo, to take over that, since he does that a lot with the planning board, and it's a site plan application. So he's going to kind of meld all our memos together and speak to that.
So then what I'll do is to ask for that to be entered into the record for the benefit of the record, and then I will throw the bone to you, and we can go. So, Ms. Solo.
Before we get started, I'll just note for the record that the noticing is in order, and the Board has jurisdiction to hear the application. Since we have Mr. Solo, as well as Mr. Bridger, and Mr. West, why don't we swear you all in together now, gentlemen? Do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening. I think I introduce myself to those of you I don't know. There are some new faces on the zoning board, on Lee Solo, the town planner. And what I'd like to do for you tonight is just sort of summarize the application, familiarize you a little bit with where it's located, although I'm sure most of you know where it is, and then just highlight some of the staff's concerns regarding the site plan itself, and then offer briefly some comments about the use variance, because there are three use variances that are before you. As Karen just said, this is a preliminary and final site plan with use and bulk variance. I'm going to be talking from, this is sheet CE3 in your packet. I will label it as ZBA1 as an exhibit. And what we've done on this drawing is simply outlined in tan the proposed building. Gray is the parking lot, and as you can see from the drawing, the property is at the corner of Mount Lucas Road and Valley Road. However, it has frontage on Valley Road, which is to the south. To the east, Mount Lucas. Cherry Hill Road is to the north, and State Highway or Route 206.
And we've lost a road in the middle.
We have, and we're going to talk about that. As you just pointed out, Terhune Road currently bisects the site roughly like that, and it goes from Mount Lucas to 206. That portion of Terhune will be vacated by the town and turned over to PFRS, Princeton First Aid and Rescue Squad, in order to make this project work. When we do that, and you'll see in Jack's report, Jack and Derek's joint report, there are a number of traffic improvements that the town is looking at doing, and we'll talk briefly about those as well. The development itself will occur on Block 7002, Lot 1, which contains 30,261 square feet, which is really this front portion. Then you have Terhune Road and another block and lot, and that is Block 7003, Lot 1, which contains 23,029 square feet. The portion of Terhune that we talked about that's being vacated is roughly 8,600 square feet in area. So the total site that we're looking at tonight is 61,892 square feet. The front piece, Block 7002, was formerly used as the township's public works garage, and is currently vacant, except there's a fueling station located in this general area. Terhune, again, is here. And that fueling station serves the town, the school board, and the fire department, and some others. That fueling station, and I can show you on the map roughly, will be relocated over here. That will be a project done by the municipality. What I've done on this drawing, and you can see it faintly on your CE3, is there's basically a half semicircle of a road that will come in, and then the fueling station will be located in this general area. If you can see the little red dot, the final location hasn't been determined. But PFRS is not responsible for that work, which is why it's only been dashed in on their plan. But I thought it was important for you to understand, especially as you read some of the comments from the advisory boards, what's going on with the fueling station. Block 7003, which is the back lot where the parking lot is proposed, is currently a grassed island. It's between State Road and Mount Lucas, and as we said, Terhune and Cherry Hill Road. It's mostly grass. There are a number of large trees, and we're going to talk about some of those trees in just a little bit. Surrounding uses, as you all know, the municipal complex that we're in now is on the other side of Valley Road. You have some residences to the east along Mount Lucas, a bank on the other side of Cherry Hill Road, and then on State Road, there's a small slither of municipal-owned land that's part of the Mountain Lakes area, and then a place of worship just a little bit further up to the west. So, as I indicated, the brown shows you the building that PFRS is proposing. That's a 15,994-square-foot building with a partial mezzanine over a portion of it. The first floor contains approximately 14,744 square feet, and that area consists of about a 5,500-square-foot garage, which will house the equipment that PFRS uses, and the remainder of the space will be dedicated to offices, conference rooms, training, kitchen, bathrooms, storage, and six bunk rooms for the volunteers to stay in. The plan indicates that the mezzanine area will be used for storage. In terms of other site improvements, at the southwest corner in this general area, an emergency generator is going to be installed. There's a little patio also to the, on the west side at the north end of the building. The current parking shows 20 parking spaces. There are three rain gardens associated with the development to help with stormwater, and I've highlighted them in green. There's one here, one to the north of that, and then on the Route 206 side, a third rain garden. To deal with water quantity, there's an underground detention proposed under the concrete apron that comes out to Valley Road. It's a series of perforated pipes that will be underground as well. The site will also include various lighting, landscaping, and walkways. Staff has been advised that tonight, PFRS, in response to staff reports and the advisory boards' reports, will present to you a revised plan. They've brought the building forward a little bit and have addressed many of the concerns that have been addressed. I'll turn it over in just a few minutes to PFRS to go over what those changes are. Staff saw an earlier version, but not the final one. The property is located in the R6 zone, which permits single-family homes on 10,890-square-foot lots. The zoning officer in his report and in my report, we identify variances in terms of use variance as well as bulk variance. I'm not going to go over the bulk variances tonight, which I would normally do, and point out where they are, because they've changed with the building being shifted. We've asked the applicant to specifically go through and identify for the boards where variances have been modified, eliminated, or new variances have been identified. But in terms of the use, you have three, what we call D variances. The first is a D1 variance, which is for use not permitted in the zone. The second is a D4 variance for FAR, and that's 25% is permitted, and 25.8% was proposed. I think that's going down slightly in the revised plan. And then a D6, which is for building height. And as you recall, that's when a building is more than 10% higher than what's allowed, and in this case, 30 feet is allowed, and they're proposing 34, so they're one foot over, but it's 10%, and it results in a D variance, which this Board has jurisdiction I'd like to share with you some comments on the use variance, but I'm going to hold that for a minute, because I think it may be better if we just talk about the site. And what I'm going to do is raise with you some of the issues that were in Jack and Derek's memorandum, as well as in some of the advisory boards. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I'm going to try to highlight the ones that seem common themes. The first dealt with some landscaping, and as you all noted on the plan, it says that 16 trees will be removed, and the plan calls for 17 replacement trees. They would be 10 shade trees and seven flowering trees. They're also planting over 250 shrubs on the original plan. The Board's advisory committees have suggested that the landscape plan be revised, and there were two major, what I considered major things. There are two trees that are fairly large on the site. Tree number 111 is a 38-inch pin oak, and that's located roughly here, within the parking lot, near the last one or two spaces in that corner. And the second one is tree number 112, which is a 26-inch red oak, which is located right here, just on the edge of the parking lot. And a number of the committees have suggested that the parking lot be shifted to ensure their preservation, as well as to try to preserve some additional trees as well. We've been advised that the revised plan does that, and again, I'll let the applicant go through that in more detail. The shade tree committee also asked that the landscape, the shade tree plan be revised to conform to what they call a 10, 20, and 30 rule for diversity, and that's something new that's been coming up, and in general, most of the applicants have agreed to that. It has to do with ensuring that we don't have a problem, as we do with the emerald ash and the ash borer, and all the ashes are dying, so we're looking to create a little bit greater diversity. And they also commented on using something other than the laurel cherry as a buffer that was proposed along some of the area. Stormwater, as I indicated, they are providing a stormwater plan. The site improvements result in 0.12 acres of new impervious surface that requires a stormwater management plan to deal with quantity, quality, and recharge. That's been reviewed by Jack West and his office, along with the underground detention. I'm advised that it does comply with the township's requirements. He did have a couple of comments under stormwater, which the applicant should address. There were a number of comments regarding traffic circulation, and as you'll see in the application, most of the traffic impacts that were identified result from the closing of Terhune Road. As I indicated earlier, the municipality and PFRS have entered into a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, the most recent one being December 19th, 2016. And in that MOU, the town will be responsible for any of the road improvements to mitigate the closure of Terhune, as well as installing an emergency light at 206 and Valley Road to allow the squad to make left turns onto Route 206. On the joint engineering and zoning report, I think on pages 6 and 8, they outline a series of traffic improvements that may be necessitated. We're not asking for the Board to approve those. The town is still working on which one of those will be required, as well as any additional sidewalks or bicycle ways. So again, you have sort of a joint project where the town is going to be doing certain of the improvements, and PFRS will be doing certain. The improvements undertaken by PFRS are before you for use variance and site plan approval. The ones for the township are not, not for the township, for the town, old habits. And you'll see in some of the advisory reports, they have expressed a concern regarding pedestrian and bicycle access along Mount Lucas. I think the revised plan begins to address that and provides the additional area to fit that in, but that's an improvement, that's my understanding, that the town will be undertaking and not PFRS. Parking. The current plan, as you saw, calls for 20 parking spaces. The parking lot also had a number of variances that were associated with it. Some of those will be eliminated on the revised plan. However, Section 10B 282 of the Land Use Code charges the Board with determining the appropriate parking standard, or the amount that's going to be needed. And that's because we don't have a volunteer rescue squad standard for parking. We do have one for offices and for residential and restaurants, and because there's not a specific use, the Board, after hearing the testimony from the applicant on the need, will need to formally set a number, whether it's 20, or 17, or something in between. You'll be making that determination, and then, or granting a variance if they don't have enough based on what you find. And then finally, with the parking, there were some comments about using pervious pavement in the parking lot. I'm advised that that's under consideration, and again, the applicant will address that when they speak. Sprab had a number of suggestions, and it seemed that one of their biggest ones that was unmet in the revised report was the location of the fueling station, and they had some concerns in terms of its operation. And again, that's going to be done by the municipality. I can tell you that was looked at by the staff, by the public works director, and others. The location, in terms of being centrally located in town, is a good location. They did look at other areas, and this is the location that the town shows for the fueling station. What I'd like to do is just very briefly talk a little bit about the three use variances that are being assessed. Again, it's a D1 to permit a use not expressly permitted in the zone, and I think you have to keep in mind, as you evaluate this use, the ordinance allows municipal functions to be in any zone. PFRS is a nonprofit volunteer organization serving the community, so it didn't qualify as a municipal function. The fire department, on the other hand, is a municipal department and would be allowed, as it is across the street currently, as a permitted use. I think you need to keep that in mind as you hear some of their testimony. But for the fact that this is an all-volunteer organization and doesn't cost the taxpayers any money, it would have been permitted. The D4 variance for the FAR, 25% permitted and 25.8% proposed, is de minimis. We met with them. We're convinced that PFRS has appropriately sized the building to meet their needs, and in the future, I'm sure, you can see the picture up on the screen, their existing facility is too small, they need the space. The D6 variance, again, was fairly de minimis in nature. 30-foot height is permitted, they're proposing 34 feet, and I'm sure they'll provide some additional testimony for the one foot extra that puts them into this D6 variance. As you all know, the applicant must provide testimony to the Board that both the positive criteria, special reasons, which carry out the purposes of zoning exist, and that the negative criteria, that the variance can be granted with no substantial detriment to the public good, and the variances will not impair the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance should be provided. And that's something you deal with all the time here, and I wasn't prepared really to go into a lot of detail. But I did want to again point out that PFRS is a volunteer organization, and they've been serving the community since 1939, and they respond to the emergency medical needs in the Princeton community. In 2016, PFRS answered 20, over 2,900 calls and transported over 2,000 residents to area The reason I mention that is, and it's a significant one in terms of the use variance, I believe, or staff believes, that the PFRS organization is what's normally is called an inherently beneficial use. That's a determination you'll have to make, but in my report, I go through a very brief analysis and come to the conclusion that the Board may want to consider them as an inherently beneficial. With that, that provides, they meet the positive criteria. They're serving the community, and they don't need to focus too much on that, which means then we should focus on the negative criteria. But once you find that it's an inherently beneficial use, there's been court cases, most notably the SICA case, which suggests that you go through four steps, and I outline those in my report, to determine whether or not it meets the negative criteria. Let me briefly go through those and then discuss them. The first is identify the public interest that's at stake. The second is, can any of the detrimental effects that would ensue from granting the variance be minimized? Third is to determine whether the Board can reduce any detrimental effects by imposing reasonable conditions. And then fourth, you're asked to balance the public interest against any detriment, and determine whether on balance, the grant of the variance would cause substantial detriment to the public good. In my report, and I'm not going to go through it, because I think the applicant is going to provide some testimony on those four steps, we basically conclude that it does meet all those tests, but again, that's something you'll have to determine based on the record, rather than me go through what's in my report. I can't answer questions on that, but I think it may be better if the applicant, and I know he has a planner here, can go through that. So with that, I'm going to stop. I don't know, before I take questions from the Board, Jack or Derek, did you, I leave out anything that you wanted to highlight?
I think you got everything.
I don't have anything to add.
Thank you. Are there questions from the Board for me or the staff before we turn... Are there questions from the board for me or the staff before we turn it over to the applicant? Yes, Michael?
Could you go over that DOT clear zone? It's in your report.
And it shows up on this sheet. There is CE3, there's a dash line, it's called the NJ dot, clear zone line, and I'm running the pointer across it. The applicant can probably speak to it a little bit more, but my understanding is in discussions with DOT in terms of the state highway, because you can see, the property line is extremely close to the state road, and what they've asked is for this, and in this case, it's, I think it stays, it's 16 feet at its narrowest, but to keep anything away from that, I think, given the curve and just the speed of the highway, they've asked that the building, because you can see some of the parking does encroach on that, but none of the building was permitted by DOT, and I'll ask the applicant and his experts to address that a little bit more, but that's my understanding. So that's why they couldn't shift the building to the west. There's also a water line that runs along Turune, which is what, in Jack's report, you'll see he had a comment under the stormwater, I think. It's a huge main, and that also prevented them from going too far to the north. So the site, while it's a good-sized site, it's constrained by the New Jersey DOT clear zone line, the water line, and then the existing road. So I think in their plan, they'll show you, they basically moved the building forward mostly, and given the shape, that gives them some additional land area.
There was also a comment about fiber optic running on the Mount Lucas, along Mount Lucas Road.
Yeah, I don't think that, is there a conflict, or Jack, do you know?
That was one of the concerns with, they have a rain garden out there, and there's a manhole, and I think they're going to, the revised plan eliminates that rain garden, so they'll address that in their testimony.
Thank you. Any other questions for myself or the staff? If not, we'll turn it over to the applicant. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Chris Tarr, the attorney for P-FARS. We're delighted to be here. As Lee pointed out, you don't often hear non-residential site plans, and so I'm very appreciative that Mr. Solok took the time to do such a thorough memo and to explain it to you. I have some good news. Instead of three D variances or use variances, we're down to two, and instead of six or seven bulk variances, we're down to five. So it still requires a use variance because the first aid squad use is not permitted in the residential zone, as Mr. Solo told you, and we still require the floor area ratio variance, although we've shrunken it down, so 25% is permitted, and we're at 25.3. So de minimis, but it still exists. The other variance was the height variance, and we had that because Sprab had recommended that we contemplate putting solar panels on the roof. And while the roof itself is at 29 feet less than the 30 feet allowed, there was some concern. Sprab also thought it was essential that they be put not flat on the roof, but up on an angle, and if that had been done, we were concerned that it might take us into that 34-foot height situation. You'll hear testimony that that's not the case. So there are the two D variances and several bulk variances, and here's how we're going to approach the application. We have four witnesses, as you see from the list. Mark Frieda, president of P-FARS, is a wonderful, longtime citizen and volunteer in Princeton, and he won't toot his horn, but he did bring one or two of his friends with him tonight. And hopefully, you'll get the picture that these wonderful people who volunteer their time to keep us safe have spent an awful lot of time at this, and Mark is much or more than any of them. Katrina Pacheco is the project manager, and I was just fascinated by this. Her architectural firm, her husband is also here, is a New Jersey licensed architect and responsible for the drawings. They do exclusively emergency service buildings, and they've done this for 20 years. And so, anything you want to know about the codes and the inside of that building, I've been fascinated to be educated along the way. Fun facts that I enjoy, they wash all the vehicles inside the building, and they have to get up on top of them, and so things of that sort. Or somewhat more seriously, when you come back from an incident, that's a sort of an unclean or potentially problematic state, whereas the back of the house is all clean, and there's a dividing line that's terribly important. So anyway, I learned a lot, and maybe you'll learn a bit about it from Katrina tonight. Tom O'Shea is with Van O'Harvey, our civil engineer, has testified here many times about civil engineer issues. You might take particular interest, and if you drove by while all this was happening, when they took down the Public Works Building, they dug a very deep hole and filled it with stone, so you'll want to hear about that, because we're using it as a part of our storm drainage system. Tom Sterns has a lot of initials after his name. He's our landscape architect and also our planner. He's testified here many times. Could we have everybody sworn all at once?
Is Mr. Frieda up here? There he is, all right. If you would all raise your right hand, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
I do. We've got all their names spelled out for you on the slide, and if I may, we have a slide deck. You see, this is slide number one. We'd like the entire deck to be marked as Exhibit A1. We'll try to refer to the pages as we give testimony so that you can have it, and we'll give Claudia and Karen copies of the disc or the stick just as soon as we're finished. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mark, who's going to take you through several of the slides and the history and current goings-on at P-FARS.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening. As Chris said, my name is Mark Frieda, I'm president of Princeton First Aid and Rescue Squad. Princeton First Aid and Rescue Squad's been in existence since 1939. It's an independent, nonprofit organization providing emergency medical services and rescue services to the Princeton community. It is not part of the municipality, it is not part of the fire department, totally independent of those two entities. What do we do? You trip on a sidewalk. You have a reaction to a food allergy. You're in a motor vehicle accident, somebody needs to climb into that car and comfort you and provide basic care to you, and the rest of the team cuts you out of that car. We're the people that do those sort of things. So we do that every day, we do that 24 hours a day, every day of the year. We have people on duty in our building, so we get a response time that's a tremendous response time, beats all national averages every year. We average almost 3,000 calls a year, transport over 2,000 people every year to hospitals in the area, primarily Princeton or Penn or whatever they're called today, but also other hospitals in the area. This slide here, we tried to pick one slide, you know, we took about 20 slides showing how condensed our building is. The building we operate out of now was built in 1963. In 1963, your ambulances were still Cadillacs, nothing like the modular ambulances that are today, built on either a van or pickup truck chassis. This slide also shows you that our building is too small for all our vehicles actually to fit into the building. So here's one of our vehicles under an awning next to the building. If you went around the back of the building, you'd find one of our trailers and another vehicle also under an additional awning. The picture of our rescue truck there, which is typical as you go down, further down the building to the other bays where our ambulances are, if you look at that, you notice that truck's pretty big for that bay. So it's a challenge for our drivers to get all our vehicles in and out of our building, because you literally have a couple inches on each side to navigate in and out of the building. So our building is too small for our vehicles, our building is too small for our people, our building is too small for all the functions that we try to, we endeavor to take part in every day. So we're going to go through some other slides, and I'll talk about that some more. Just a little bit about who I am and why I'm able to talk to you about emergency services and the Princeton First Aid and Rescue Squad in particular. I've been a member of the First Aid Squad, I hate to admit it, for 43 years. I've been a member of the Fire Department for 44 years. I was on the then Borough Council for 13 years, Police Commissioner for 11 of those. A few years ago, when we had a committee put together to combine the two towns, I was the chair of that committee that put up the final recommendations on how to combine the two towns into one town. So I have a fair bit of experience in the community, and I, on this topic, I think I'm an expert. If we could go to the next slide. So this is the interior of the new building. A couple hours ago, before I left my house, I went through some old emails that I have, and literally, almost exactly 15 years ago was when the First Aid Squad first contacted a number of architectural firms to do a study to see what would be our options to either build in place or replace our current inadequate building. So it's been a long road for us. We've looked at many sites around town over the years. In fact, the site we're talking about tonight, we looked at in 2008 when there were two Prinsons. We were talking to the township about using the site, we were waiting for the borough and the township to agree to move the Public Works Departments of both towns to another site, but as so many things, when the two towns were trying to work something out, that never happened, so that site went away. But 10 years later, we're back. This site is a tremendously advantageous site for the First Aid Squad. Two reasons why. It is almost the exact geographic center of the town. The old hospital site, little bit up Witherspoon, is actually the exact geographic center of the town. Call volume-wise, this site is the exact center of our call volume, so every direction you go, it's an even mix of calls. Also, you look at all, you're all familiar with all the roadways here, I mean, any direction we want to go at a moment's notice, we're headed in the right direction. So tremendous site for us. A little bit on the building, the interior of the building, and part of what I'm going to do is just give you some general comments, and our professional staff here is going to, not staff's not the right word, but our professional team is going to go into more detail on a number of things. But if you look at the building, the gray shadow things are all different vehicles we own, and these are all vehicles except for one, one of the trailers at a slant there we don't actually own yet, but all the rest are vehicles we actually own. So today, we have vehicles in our building, we have vehicles outside our building, and one of the trailers with the boat on it is actually at the Hook and Ladder Firehouse on Harrison Street, because we don't have room in or around our building for that. So, big advantage to us is having all our equipment in one place and in a building where it's actually protected. So that area there is all the apparatus bay, there's rooms above the apparatus bay, decontamination, you get back after a call, bodily fluids, blood, things like that, you have to decontaminate your equipment, you need a specific room for that. There's another room for a storage of oxygen bottles, you need to have those properly secured. The emergency generator's outside the building. Below the apparatus bay, which will be along Mount Lucas Road, are a number of bunk rooms. So overnight, our crews in between calls do try to sleep, and we place the bunk rooms directly across from the couple houses that are on the other side of Mount Lucas, trying to respect that relationship. If you go over to the right, the bottom right-hand corner is a combination meeting room, classroom. Right now, we hold three EMT classes a year in our building to train new members of the organization. Primarily, those courses are made up of people that are joining Princeton First Aid and Rescue Squad. So we train them at our building, they learn on our equipment. When they get done that class, they're that much better prepared and that much quicker to be able to become a functioning member of the squad. Also, to the top there, we have a social area, so we have a dining area, we're going to have a residential kitchen, not a commercial kitchen, we're not doing weddings, we're not doing banquets, none of that stuff, that kitchen's for us. There's sort of a living room, I'd call it, to the left of that. One of the things that we try to do is encourage our members to be in the building as often as possible. It is amazing the frequency at which we'll get multiple calls, either at the same time or within a few minutes of each other. Prior to this meeting, over the last few months, we had three neighborhood meetings where we invited a lot of the neighbors to this building to come and talk to us and see what we were going to do. Before one of those meetings, in about a 13-minute span, we had four calls. Luckily, we have four ambulances, and we had enough people to answer all those calls. But that's why we encourage people and we try to build a space into our building to have people come and stay at the building even when they're not on duty. We also have a little study area, one of the rooms will be a quiet room, so to speak. We have a lot of students from, whether it's Princeton University, Rutgers, College of New Jersey, et cetera. They actually have a place where they can get away from the noise and have a quiet study area. So we've done quite a bit of planning for this building. Like I said, we've worked on this project for 15 years, so a lot has gone into the function within the building and how all those functions relate to each other. Can we go to the next slide? This is the original site plan, and we'll get into the, later in the presentation, the new site plan. The building has shifted a little bit. Our original parking lot was different from this. This parking lot design was driven by the town's fueling station, which is not part of our application, but you need to be aware of it. The fueling station will be there. Our original parking lot saved all the specimen trees that were in the report Lee mentioned. But for some reason, this came back after our talks with the town, but luckily, the Environmental Commission and the Shade Tree Commission both objected strongly, luckily, to the parking lot plan you see, and we were able to redesign the parking lot. You'll see the redesigned plan later on. It's much more compact, all the specimen trees are saved, and we believe we've also improved the layout of the fueling station and how that impacts on Mount Lucas Road. But again, that's not part of our application. We've made a lot of effort to address all the concerns of the staff, of the Sprab, the Environmental Commission, and the Shade Tree Commission, and the neighbors that came to our three different neighborhood meetings. All right, I think that was my list. The next up is Katrina Pacheco. Katrina, sorry, I've got to put my glasses on. Katrina is with H2M Architects and Engineers. She has worked over 19 years, she worked for over 19 years with Pacheco Ross Architects, a nationally recognized, award-winning architectural firm that for two decades was dedicated exclusively to the design of emergency response facilities throughout North America. With 25 years of experience, she is involved in the production evaluation and construction administration of over 100 emergency response facilities. She's an honorary member of the Grand Boulevard Fire Company. Her experience with sustainable practices and emergency response project expertise has enabled her to knowledgeably write, teach, and consult on many aspects of emergency response facilities. So, Katrina?
Ms. Pacheco, before you testify, just one question. Your husband is the architect of record, correct?
That is correct.
And he is licensed in New Jersey?
He is.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mark? Chairman and board. I'm Katrina Pacheco, as he said, from H2M Architects and Engineers. Thank you. And what I'd like to do is continue on with the description of the project. The image that you see up on the screen in front of you is a rendering of what we think the building could look like.
This is an accurate one for what you're planning to build now?
Mostly accurate. There have been a few changes based on the discussion with the advisory board, and we will go through that as we go through the additional slides.
You'll point those out.
Yes, yes. The majority of the materials and the massing remain the same. For instance, you see where the ambulance is parked in front of the bay doors along Valley Road. There's a sloped roof that allows the water, rain, and snow to shed off to the east and not onto the front of the building where the vehicles will be parked or going in and out, so it's, we're preventing a danger there by sloping the roof in that direction. We've also got the higher end of that roof, that's where the mezzanine is over the support spaces that are on the west side of the bays that Mark talked about. The watchroom that's on the corner there that allows them to see all of the intersection from that room, it's also a place where they do reports. The west side of the building, as you saw in the plan, has a lot of service rooms and some quiet rooms. We've tried to minimize the openings where we don't want openings, because we know there's a lot of traffic and noise along that side. I think we'll go to the next. As you can see on the depiction of the elevations, the height we have brought down the building from 34 feet that was first submitted to under 30 feet, and that includes the potential solar array. We have been talking with a company about what is required for solar panels at an angle so that they're facing the sun properly, and they said that it was of a height that, where we have placed them on the roof, and you'll see that in a later roof plan, they do not come up above the 30 feet. So we think we've addressed that variance question. As you can also see on the Valley Road As you can also see on the Valley Road elevation, we've got, it's smaller towards the east. If you look at the bottom there, the Mount Lucas Road elevation, the bunk rooms that are along that side are in a very short portion of the building. We didn't want it to be too large. We know that there are residences right across the street. In terms of scale and material, we didn't want to have something that was out of character. If we go to the next slide. On the top, you can see the view of the building from Cherry Hill Road, which is also from the parking lot that's been planned. We have a central main entrance that will have a small roof over it. The windows are located for the meeting room, the offices, and then the living space that Mark talked about, the dining, kitchen, living area, outside of which there is that patio. On the New Jersey Route 206 elevation on the west, you can see again the bays or that larger, taller space, and then it's smaller in scale for that living area. On the roof plan, one of the concerns that had come from the advisory board was their concern for either a rain guard, sorry, a green roof or solar array up on the roof. We have a good amount of flat roof area, low slope area that we can put this on. We also have shown that the mechanical units that will serve the building, at least schematically, will be screened from all the different views, so we're not, anyone around the building, including in, from this building, would not be seeing those mechanical units, they would be screened. But there is a large amount of area that is available for solar, and the client certainly is intending to do that. The rescue squad intends to do that, as, as funding allows. I think we can go to the next thing. And you can see a 3D depiction. This project has been modeled in a Building Information Modeling Program, Revit, and what I've done is shown it on the shortest day of the year so that we could make sure that sun was reaching all of those solar panels. We will continue to work with the solar company to make sure that we maximize what they can do on that roof. I think I do want to go back a little bit to talk about the materials, if you go back one more. The materials on the building, as you saw in the colored rendered elevation, colored rendering, were brick, cast stone, some metal panel instead of the, the manufactured stone that was up on the top part of it. It's going to be metal, more similar to what's on the current building that we're in. That was a concern of the advisory board, that there were maybe too many materials or too many different materials, but we wanted to make sure that there were a consistency of look around the building, that it fits into the context, that it is complementary to the area that it sits. I think that... Oh, yes, yes. Thank you. One of the tasks we're, we're going to talk about tonight is the signage on the building, and I believe some of what we're going to talk about is the number of signs in the area of the signs. I've provided a chart showing how many signs that we have talked-
You'll talk about lighting as well, huh?
One of my colleagues will talk about the lighting. Yes, yes. Currently, we're asking to be allowed one freestanding sign, which you can see on the bottom left of the slide. And this is a double-sided wood sign that would have lighting either mounted right on the sign or on the piers there with, with shielding so that no light bulb would be visible from the street. It would be directed at the sign. The building-mounted signage I've shown on additional slides here on each elevation. If we could go to the next one. On the west elevation, which is Route 206, currently we're showing, which is different from the submission, that we have lettering as well as the emblem for the rescue squad, and the areas are, are shown in the, in the chart on the previous slide.
Do you want to explain why you feel you need so many signs to identify a single building?
Partly, it was because it is such an important centrally-located amenity in the, in the community. If, and I would ask Mark to speak to the number of signs and, and the indication that this is here, and how many the board would allow. It hasn't been there before. Many people drive past the current location and have no idea that they're there.
You have no signs on the current location, as far as I remember, is that true?
I would ask Mark to reply.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
No, we're talking about signage. I don't think you have signs.
Well, there's, there actually, there is lettering on our current building. It's, it's just kind of hard to see. It's, it's old and faded, but it's actually on Clear, on the Clearview Avenue side of the current building. But to your question just before as, why do we need so much signage? You know, actually, we've looked at this again, and we agree with you. So on the Route 206 side, which is the elevation that's being shown now, we have lettering and the emblem. We would like to suggest that we actually drop the emblem and stick with the lettering, but we should go through the other elevations and show you, show you the other signage we've requested, and then have it, have, you know, go back and forth on that.
Thank you, Mark. So if we could go to the next one. The next one shows the north elevation, again facing the parking lot, Cherry Hill Road. It has simple lettering up high on the building. Now, the address numerals and the date stone, I believe, are exempt from the signage requirements, but the lettering that is shown there would be counted as one of the signs. There is also a small dashed rectangle just to the left of the main door, and it has also been suggested that in lieu of the lettering on one of the facades, that there could be commemorative signage there that, that again, Mark Frieda could talk about in terms of the nature of that. We have not heard what the nature of that would be, but the area of it would be less or equal to what we are currently showing for that lettering.
The signage you show is not illuminated, I assume, is that right?
Currently, I actually have shown there as it would be lit with linear wall-mount washlights. They would point, they would be pointed directly at the lettering.
Oh, I see, thanks, well, that row along the top.
Correct, correct. Similarly, if we go back-
And it's on all night?
No, I imagine that what will happen is, as with the parking lot lights, we have a shift change at 11:00 PM, so we're thinking the parking lot lights will probably turn off about 11:15, so a lot of that lighting on the, on the building could turn off then also. One of the reasons that we have our name in a number of places on the building is there's a lot of confusion by residents as to which building is the First Aid Squad, which building is a firehouse, and, you know, it just, you like people to know where they're actually showing up, and, you know, which, you know. Anyway, we just like people to know who we are versus who somebody else is, so that's why we have a number, a number of signs there. If we go back to one slide, shall we show next to the doorway?
No.
Okay, so the little dash there to the left of the doorway, similar to what the library did, we have a, we have a potential for commemorative-type signage, building name, so we want to do similar to what the library had done, and that would be next to that door. Okay, slow down, there we go. So, this is viewing us from, from the north, this is from the parking lot, so there would be lettering on the, on that side. Let's jump back another one. We have lettering on the Route 206 side. All right, well, this is, okay. There's Route 206, so on the right, we'd like to keep the left, the emblem, we don't need both on the Route 206. We'd like to drop the one on the left, keep the one on the right. Let's go back one more to the Valley Road site, Valley Road side. And then on Valley Road, we would like to keep the emblem there if possible. I think that kind of goes through all the signage. Let me know if you got that. I mean, I know, sorry that we're bouncing around on signage. Happy to go through it again, just to make sure you understand what we're asking for.
No, I think we understand, very good.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I think I'll turn this over to Tom O'Shea.
So this is the site plan that was originally submitted with the parking lot. You can see the thirty-six-inch oak that was being taken down for the construction of the parking lot. The dashed line is the town's fueling station. Yeah, I'll, I'll-
Can you speak into it?
Yeah, I will. So, there's a couple things here that also is consideration for the change to the site plan. In Terhune, the original survey showed the water line in Terhune in the, the middle of the road. It's a thirty-inch transmission line, and it's actually closer to Valley Road, it's closer to the edge of the road, so maybe about a month and a half ago, with the town, we did some exploratory holes. There were three holes along the curb line, and we located the line, and that caused us to move the building. In working with New Jersey American Water Company, they're requiring a thirty-foot easement over that line, centered on the line, so we have to move the building so that it's not within that easement. So again, that moved the building a little bit closer to Valley Road. You asked about the clear zone, the sixteen-foot clear zone. Department of Transportation, early on in the project, the municipality and I went down and met with the state, and based on the classification of the highway, the speed of the highway, et cetera, they classified a sixteen-foot clear zone from the edge of the pavement. And what that means is no building can be constructed within that area, that we don't need a guardrail, but we'll probably end up putting a guardrail along, along here, but the building had to be kept outside of that. The parking lot, they didn't see that as an obstruction, and we were allowed to push that within the sixteen-foot clear zone. The other item that we talked about is with regard to the fiber optic line, and the fiber optic line is underground essentially from the corner of Valley Road and Mount Lucas along the, the elevation right here. When it gets to the fueling station, you can see this when you go out, is there's a utility pole there, and then it comes out of the ground, and then it's aerial as it continues the rest of the way up Mount Lucas. So, when we get to the site plan, this is just an overlap of what was submitted and what's being proposed. It's just to show the subtle changes, but I really like to move on to the, to the site plan. I guess that, I guess that's it. This is the site plan, much simpler. The changes here is the parking lot, you can see it's much more condensed. We have seventeen parking spaces. What we've done with the rain gardens, we've eliminated the rain garden on the east side of the building. We still have a rain garden in the southwest corner, there's a rain garden over in here. And with the relocation of the parking, we, we're showing the rain garden at this location, and with the fueling station, we'll probably end up coming into this green space a little bit. So, we also, I don't know why it's doing that, we, we also met with the Traffic and Transportation Group, and the sidewalk along Mount Lucas, they wanted it moved back from the curb. We had a six-foot wide sidewalk at that location, right up against the curb. They asked us to move it, to give it a little bit of a space, and we're showing it as eight feet wide over in there, and that was another reason for eliminating the one rain garden. The stormwater management for the site, we have the two rain gardens that I described. On the apron along Valley Road, we have a series of large perforated pipes that deal with the volume portion of it, and we're using perforated pipes so that we can take advantage of, as Mr. Tar said, of the large hole that was dug on the site and backfilled with gravel. So, the project as now currently designed, we reduced the impervious surface from the original submission by approximately four thousand feet, so it's almost a balance from what's there right now, but we're providing stormwater that not only meets the town code, but it exceeds the town code.
The parking area still has an impervious surface?
The parking area, the center aisle is impervious. The parking stalls themselves are porous pavement, and the reason why we do that is the porous pavement is a little bit softer than standard pavement, and with the turning of the wheels, it tends to grind up the pavement a little bit. So we found, found that it's a little bit more effective if we do the porous pavement in the parking stalls, and that's something that we worked out with Mr. West over the last couple projects that we've worked on in town. I know that Mr. Sterns is going to go through some of the variances, but this plan saves the three large oak trees. We've moved the building for the water line, parking, this plan shows seventeen spaces, and we have the dashed line on the slip-through for the fueling station. We have five land bank spaces there that we would ask to be able to construct those if we find that we need the parking.
All of the spaces you saw are full-sized?
Yeah, well, they're, they're smaller than the town code. The town code is a nine-by-nineteen-
Eighteen feet deep, rather than nineteen.
And we're making them nine by eighteen feet, they're a foot shorter.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's something that we've been doing in town for, for a long time. It's, it's a variance that's typically requested. There's a transformer in the corner of Valley and Mount Lucas. We're asking for a variance, and Mr. Sterns will go through the variances. When we last met with the, the SBRB Subcommittee, we talked to them, and what they were interested, interested in is us screening that from the street and that we can gain access from our apron, and we agreed to that, so that's how that will be constructed. The one area on the west side of the building, and you saw it in the model from the architect, is there's a screened-in area over in there, and that houses the garbage recycling, and we're looking for compost as well, but there's also an emergency generator that's being placed there.
The generator is in that same location?
It's in that same location, and that generator is fed by natural gas, which is located in Valley Road. PFARs has agreed to provide emergency power to the municipalities, a fueling station when that's constructed. And, and the fueling station relocation is going to happen before the start of the construction of the building because the existing fueling station's in the way. And the, we, we did mention, and this was a comment from Environmental Commission, that the vehicles are washed inside the building, and any of the waste goes directly to the sanitary sewer.
And where does that water get discharged?
It, it goes to the wastewater treatment plant on River Road, so it gets treated. I'll pass it on to Tom Sterns to go through the landscaping.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great.
Surprisingly.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to touch on some landscape and lighting issues first, and then I'll move on to the variance testimony. So with the new plan, we're only removing ten trees, and those trees that we are removing are basically in and around the footprint of the building. As mentioned before, we're saving the big trees. The landscape, it's pretty simple, there's foundation plannings, there's very few trees on the plan because we have a lot of restrictions. We have the overhead power lines, we have the thirty-inch water line and the thirty-foot easement, we have the NJDOT clear zone, we can't put any trees in there. We can probably plant along that strip, along Mount Lucas Road, but again, there's some overhead lines in there, we, we probably have to plant some, some smaller trees that aren't going to get quite as big. And then there's the, the two rain gardens. With the lighting, eighteen-foot fix- With the lighting, 18-foot fixtures.
This drawing does not have the loop road on it, does it?
That's correct.
So, won't that eliminate some portion of those trees, the green trees?
Yeah, that's the town's doing that. That's not our application.
You know, we're kind of in a tough spot here. The fueling station is the town's, it's not ours. So, the town, the staff, have said that we should put in an application, which is for what we're going to do.
And then they cut your trees down and put the road in.
Right, but we are trying to show...
That doesn't sound efficient.
Well, I know, but we are trying to make you aware of the fueling station, and that it will be there. And there's an additional slide. There should be one more slide. Where's the other slide with the... Oh, there you go. So, here's what we believe the fueling station roadway will look like. It will impact a small number of trees, but they're smaller trees. They're none of the large specimen trees. And as Tom Sterns just said, what we hope to do, whatever the Traffic and Safety Transportation, whatever that committee's called now, they wanted an eight-foot wide sidewalk. SPRAB wanted us to do more of a gap between the curb and the sidewalk. So, what we are proposing is that we do a five-foot gap between the curb and the sidewalk, and then we do a six-foot sidewalk, and that'll leave about a nine- or 10-foot strip of grass and shrubbery to the edge of the building. And we hope in that gap between the sidewalk and the curb to be able to plant a number of small trees along Mount Lucas. So, we are endeavoring to put as many trees on the site as we can, and we believe that the impact on the number of trees that'll be removed by the town's work will more than compensate for.
That's fine. I'm not as concerned about trees as some people on these committees. I just found that slide not to be accurate, and that's all. I just wanted to point out that there should be that loop.
Right, well, see, so here's our dilemma. Our application does not include the fueling station because it's not us. It's the town who's exempt from this process. We're trying to be, we're trying to do the right thing and show it on some of our slides, but we're not presenting their project for them, and so...
But do those trees count for your project?
Which, the trees that would be removed?
Well, the trees on that one slide without the loop road. You said you're removing 10 trees, but replacing it with other trees.
The trees, the trees that we are removing are due to our building.
Okay.
I don't know exactly how many trees the town plans to remove for their fueling station.
The trees that the town would remove as part of the fueling station would be their responsibility to deal with.
Okay, I really, like, you know me, I don't really care about the trees as much as some people, but I just found this slide not to be quite accurate because it didn't have...
Good point.
I didn't want you to think it's some beautiful tree marked over there.
Well, the new fueling station is not yet located, I suspect.
I understand. Thank you.
I'll talk about lighting now.
Yeah.
18-foot fixtures are proposed. The ordinance requires 14-foot for residential zone. The parking lot is a lot smaller now. There's going to be less impact. There are existing public street lights that are higher and brighter along Mount Lucas Road than what we're proposing. Really, you've got to look at this site. It's really functionally more as a commercial site. It's totally surrounded by very busy roadways. And also, there's an existing, pretty much an existing buffer of woods along, across the street from Mount Lucas, along those residential homes along there. So, we think, we think the 18-foot high lighting fixtures are appropriate. They're cutoff fixtures.
Can I make a comment about that? The board has always been very concerned about light spillage from other people's property. And so, I don't mind what height in principle. The difference between 14 and 18 is not critical, but I think there are two constraints that you should observe. One is that the illuminating source itself should not be visible from off the property, and it should be screened in such a way that no light falls over your property line from that illumination. I lived next door to a university parking lot for a long time, and their lights were really annoying.
Yeah, the lights are going to be off at 11:15.
Doesn't matter when they're off. When they're on, they don't spill light on the public right of the wall.
Yeah, well, and as I mentioned before, there will be, you know, cutoff light fixtures.
Sorry?
There'll be what you call cutoff light fixtures, so that the light is shooting downwards, and you shouldn't be able to see the light source.
And you're not going to use those, or you are?
We're using an LED fixture, but a lot of the LED fixtures are recessed up in the housing.
Right.
Yeah, we agree with you.
That'll shut me up for at least 10 minutes.
So, let me move on to the variance testimony now. Again, I've reviewed Lee Solo's memo. I've been to the site a number of times. I think Lee's done a good job of summarizing the points of fact. We're going for the two variances, the use variance and the FAR variance. Again, it's a very de minimis amount for the FAR variance. It's like an additional 185 square feet, the 25.3 versus the 25. I think Mark Frieda, Tom O'Shea, and the architect have given you a good overview of the project. I'm going to focus now on the necessary proofs. I would say the theme of this application is really you're providing a new home for emergency response volunteers in Princeton. I'd first like to touch on the site and that it's particularly suited for this particular location. The map, you can see the site is essentially above the T in Princeton on that map. It's, again, it's the R6 zone. It's municipally owned. Used to be the Public Works Building there. It was a parking lot for municipal vehicles. It's really not a good site for residential use. The site was previously contaminated, but it's been cleaned up now. Again, the site is an island. It's surrounded by very busy roads. It's vacant right now. It's located at 206 Valley Road, Mount Lucas, and Witherspoon. The only residential use is to the east. There's commercial, public, and institutional uses to the north, west, and south. It's, as Mark mentioned, it's in the geographic middle of the township. It's a great location for a first aid rescue squad. There's good vehicular access to all the main town arteries from this location. It's also adjacent to the municipal complex, which we're in here right now. And also, there's a concentrated municipal uses in the immediate area, from the municipal building to the firehouse, to the park, and the schools. Also, the town has agreed to a deal with PFARs for this site. So, the site is an inherently beneficial use, as Lee's mentioned in page three of his memo, and as all the reasons that Mark mentioned and has outlined. Again, the inherently beneficial use satisfies the positive criteria. What we need to show that the variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. So, what I'm going to do now is go through the four prongs of the CECA process for an inherently beneficial use. The first prong, the board should identify the public interest at stake. Again, Lee's said this on page four of his memo. PFARs provides emergency medical services. It's a promotion of public safety with this use. The existing building is old and obsolete. They desperately need a new building. As Mark's testified, it's really too small what they have right now. The community is going to be better served by a new building at this new central location with arterial road access. It's a win-win, a public-private partnership between the town and PFARs. Prong number two, the board should identify the detrimental effects that will ensue from the grant of the variance. As Lee said in his memo, there's no detrimental effects for the two variances that we're requesting. PFARs is a private nonprofit. If the municipality owned this, it would, if it was a municipal-owned use, it would be exempt. The town has determined the site and its use is appropriate by their memorandum of understanding. The intensity of use and the density is appropriate for this use type. The property is particularly suited for this higher density. I don't see that there are any negative property value effects. There's no increase in traffic. There's no damage to the character of the neighborhood. It's architecturally similar to the municipal building now that there have been design adjustments. The character will be improved by elimination of the garage and the vacant lot. The FAR variance is de minimis. It's less than 1%. The building is appropriately sized, and as we mentioned, the height now complies with the building, and we don't need that. Prong three of CECA, the board may reduce the detrimental effects by imposing reasonable conditions of the use. PFARs worked with the town to address the site plan comments. They redesigned the site and the building. We're saving the big trees. We're doing some sustainable building standards. We've reworked the parking lot. We're providing porous pavements and rain gardens. Traffic is being improved by the municipality and the NJ DOT. Prong four of CECA, the board then should weigh the positive and negative criteria and determine whether, unbalanced, the grant of the variance would cause a substantial detriment to the public good. The public interest served by the application outweighs the detriments. The granting of the variances will not cause detriment to the public good. This will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. No residential use will be built on this site since it is owned by the municipality, so it does not impair the R6 zone. It's not an appropriate site for residential use. There's no impairment of the R6 zone. Any other landowner can develop their property per the R6 zone regulations. There's no impairment of the zone plan or zone ordinance or the master plan. It's consistent with the zone ordinance and master plan. It furthers many of the recommendations of the Princeton Community Master Plan for community facilities. It's consistent with the Mercer County Growth Management Plan, and it's consistent with the New Jersey State Development and Redevelopment Plan. It meets the policy objectives. Again, this is a unique and creative design solution to give PFARs a new home. To summarize the benefits, it's a new home for volunteers who've served the community for many years. It's good for the community, and it's a win-win deal. So, what I'd like to do now is go through and address the C2, the bulk variances. So, the front yard setbacks, we're requesting, first of all, there's, we're surrounded by roads, so every setback is a front yard setback. Again, with 10B 246, 25 feet is required. 10 feet is provided at Mount Lucas Road with the new plan, as you can see there. For Route 206, 25 feet is required, and at the narrowest point, 20.4 feet is provided with the new plan. From Valley Road, 25 feet is required. 19.8 is provided there at the corner of the building. And for the transformer at Valley Road, 25 feet is required and two feet is provided from both roadways. And the transformer will be screened with landscape. Again, you have, you know, it's a narrow lot. It's an irregular shaped lot. The building size is appropriate. We had all the constraints of the water line, the DOT clear zone. We're well buffered along Route 206. We believe the public benefit outweighs the detriment of the reduced setbacks. 10B 284, the parking stall size, again, nine-by-19 is required, nine-by-18 is provided. This is a typical variance that's requested. It's a de minimis change. There's less impervious coverage. There's no impacts from this variance. We also had two variances for parking lot islands, but they've essentially gone away with the new parking lot design. So, 10B 317.1, parking lot lighting, as I mentioned before, 14-foot required, 18-foot provided. The four-foot higher poles are more efficient and better lighting uniformity. We're using the cutoff fixtures. It's a smaller parking lot now. We don't think there's going to be an impact to the residences. 10B 297, signs. No signs are permitted in the residential zone. Right now, we're proposing a freestanding sign, two text facade signs, and I believe one emblem or a logo. We've dropped the emblem along Route 206. Again, previously, Mark and Katrina went over all the sign details. We believe the signage is appropriate, given the use. There's no negative impacts from the signage. I think it's important to have clarity. Again, PFARs is a nonprofit. They do need some signage for donor naming. And then, just to wrap up for the C2 variance, again, they relate to the specific piece of property, it does. The purposes of MLUL would be advanced. Again, because of the public safety benefits, the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. It can. The benefits of the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment. I believe they do. The variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And there's a parking setback at Mount Lucas. 20-foot is required versus we're providing four feet. I'm sorry, 25 is required.
Number 12.
Point four? Point four.
Mr. Sterns, just a quick question for you. Mr. Solo, in his opening comments, identified an additional concern by the Shatree Commission, this 10, 20, 30 tree species diversity rule. Is that something that PFARs can comply with, or...
Yeah, well, you know, we can change the species. That's not a big deal.
Okay. And Mr. Solo notes cherry laurels.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to change all that. We're going to meet all the, those little comments.
All right.
Yeah, and one more variance, I'm sorry. On the parking lot at the top on Route 206, 25 feet is required, and we're providing 12.1 feet. Sorry.
So, those are all of our experts, and if there are questions from the board, we'd love to entertain them now. We've had some already, but if there are more, then you could have the public interaction, and if I could sum up after the public speaks.
Yeah, I still am concerned about the large number of signs on the building. I understand it's nice to identify it, but it doesn't seem that it needs to be identified. I understand it's nice to identify it, but it doesn't seem that it needs to be identified in the intense way you're trying to do it. I guess that's because my first experience on the zoning board 40 years ago was worrying about signs. And that seemed to take up almost every meeting I went to, but it's stuck. Here you've got a circular emblem of some sort, which is a very reasonable sign. I think that that's less objectionable than some large lettering. I've got, I found this on the web. It's not the thing that you have actually shown me, but that's got very large sort of lettering and...
What bothers you about that?
And the fact that you're illuminating this as well is something that, again, makes it more aggressive. And I personally dislike that on a building of this type. I don't think the fire department across the road has spotlight saying it's a fire department.
I, for one, am not bothered by the signs. I think this building is like on an island with all the facades have exposure to the public. It's not like, you know, there's a building here and there's another building right next to it that no one's going to see a sign because there's an alleyway there. This is an exposed building. You have people coming down 206. You've got people riding by Valley Road. In my opinion, you can have signs on all these exposed areas.
Yeah, I agree with the exposure of the building and all of those, you know, quite busy roads around it. I don't have an issue with the amount of signage. I do have a question about the parking, but I don't know if anyone else has a comment on the signs. Okay. How was it determined, the number of spots that you are showing? How did you come up with that number?
The parking is really determined by the use we now have. So during the Monday to Friday, say 7:00 to, 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, we would, well, not even for that span. I'd say from 9:00 to, 9:00 to around 5:00, we probably would have 7 to, 7 to 12 people in the building typically. At night, it's, could be anywhere from 2:00 to 6:00. Weekends, it's probably going to be, again, from like, say, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, it's probably going to be 4:00 to 8:00. So for most of the time, the number of parking spaces are more than adequate. There are times when the parking lot probably will be full, and that might be during our EMT classes. We also envision that the meeting room we showed in the corner, it's also our classroom. Our intent is to make that room available to other nonprofits in town, so they might have meetings where the parking lot might become full. But then again, there's parking right across the street at this building, either in the police parking lot, and that parking that would either be mostly in the evening or on weekends. So the police parking lot would be available, and then, of course, the parking lot over here by the pool would also be available to people. But the amount of spaces that we asked for really represents what we think is more than enough spaces for what we need on a typical day. Although we did hedge our bets a little and ask for the five land bank spaces. Our intent, though, is not to have to come back and ever ask for those.
I have another question. Two questions, actually. The first one is, do you have enough room in front of your garages for your trucks to back up and turn around and pull into the garage without hitting the street?
Yes. So I'll wait till the right slide comes up. Okay, we need something that shows the apron. One of the site plans? Well, yeah, okay. Okay. Here you go. So Valley Road's kind of at an angle there. Our largest vehicle is towards the top of the picture, which is our rescue truck, which is about 40 feet long, and that apron space is about 65. As you come down, the space is less, but our smallest vehicle, our smallest vehicles would be in the bay closest to Mount Lucas, and there's adequate space for them. So we've, you know, we had the same concern because if the vehicles are out front, we want safe area around it for our members to walk around them and not have to worry about getting hit by a car. But there's also adequate space, so as we come back to the building, you can actually pull onto the apron and basically make a K-turn and back into the building.
Good, thank you. The other question I have, you've been with the company how long, 40?
You weren't supposed to ask that, but 43 years.
And you've seen a fair amount of growth in that time.
Yes. Well, you know, the population of the town has changed. Our call volume has increased dramatically over, well, it's a long time, so, you know, our call volume is quite higher.
What I'm concerned about is I don't see any growth space in this. It looks like you're filling up your bays. It looks like you've got six beds. Do you have, do you anticipate, do you see any growth in the next 10 or 20 years? I mean, because it's pretty limited here.
Right. So we are thinking that we have adequate space in the building for the vehicles we need. Like I said, we have four ambulances now, and the ambulances are doing the bulk of the traveling around town, responding to emergency calls. You know, I guess we will have to pay attention to whatever the affordable housing obligation is that Princeton's going to be, going to have to address. But we don't, we don't feel that the potential future growth of the town is such that we're not going to be able to do what we need to do with inside of that building. We think we can, we'll be fine.
Okay. One of the things I learned along the way was they've got some equipment elsewhere. There's an ambulance over at the university, which is helpful to have there. University students help our volunteers and can work with it. As Mark said, he's got a boat over at the firehouse. I mean, it could come to that, but this seems to be adequate for the foreseeable future.
We still haven't really resolved the signage issue, it seems to me. It's been laid on the table and we need some sort of agreement as to how to lessen the number of signs.
I heard...
And worry about their illumination.
I heard several board members take a different view. We ought to perhaps, when we get to the end, we could, you could talk among yourselves. It's not our place. We've given you the reason for each sign and just see how it comes out.
We'll be happy to talk about it.
Perry, can I just offer a comment on the, you know, this is a residential zone, so no signs are permitted.
No, I agree.
But if this were not a residential zone, the code does allow one sign per frontage, one facade sign per frontage, so.
So the one in the facing the parking lot is not a frontage. The other three sides which...
The other three sides are legitimate frontage. And then I could say you need to identify an entrance from a parking lot.
And there's an area specified of signs?
Well, there's probably 15 different zones, and the max size is typically for a facade sign is 24 square feet, and that requires coming to either a planning board or some kind of review board like this to get approval for it.
Bigger than that.
Yeah. Well, or even to get that size to, so they, you know, they're asking for that relief.
With all due respect to your opinion about signage and lights as well, I could see, I'm imagining that there could be some confusion about if there wasn't adequate signing, that people might show up there thinking it's the police or the, you know, that there could be some things that could cause trouble.
I'm not saying the building shouldn't have signage. I just think there's a lot of it, and it's illuminated. Most of these are things that, we can discuss it, and you can give me a hard time in the discussion.
Mr. Tark, quick question for you. The comments Mr. West and Mr. Bridger had in their memo, comments and recommendations, those are acceptable to Pfar's?
They are. I also should point out, the site plan review advisory board, the SBRAB board memo is a bit unusual. If you read it carefully, you saw that we went and had a spirited discussion about the size, location, setbacks, trees, parking lot, fuels, fueling station, lots of things that were talked about. And we literally went back, again, taking the recommendations that were made that evening, made some changes to the plan, one of which, by the way, that board now has more architects on it than the majority of the folks on that SBRAB board are architects. So one of the big issues to them was compatibility with the facade of this building. And we got the plans of this building and incorporated changes. So it's an unusual in the sense that the italicized portions of that memo or the subcommittee meeting that took place after the other, and they interlineated those changes that were made the second time. So I just wanted to point that out and say that we also would comply with the recommendations made there. I think you see, if you read it carefully, looked at these revised plans, that we incorporated as many of those recommendations as we could.
So let me open it up. Are there people in the audience who wish to make zoning comments about this building? There should be a microphone. You'll have to identify yourself and swear to be truthful, and our attorney will do that for you. Is it working? Try tapping it.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Sir, could you state your name and address first for the record?
My name is Michael Suber. For 35 of the 56 years in which I have lived in Princeton, I've resided at 38 Terhune Road, which is four houses east of the corner from Mount Lucas Road. The Princeton First Aid and Rescue Squad is certainly one of Princeton's wonderful organizations, serving some 10% of the 30,000 residents in Princeton each year, of whom about 2,000, we learn, are transported to a medical or other service facility. The impact of this facility on our neighborhood can be positive, neutral, or negative, depending on both the visual and the audible features. Let me take the audible first, because that may be the most obvious. When an emergency vehicle leaves the rescue squad for take care of some issue, I expect that there will be a lot of noise in order to alert traffic to the presence of that emergency vehicle. If, I know that Princeton has a noise ordinance, but I don't know how that impacts sirens and other noise from the vehicles. The other aspect is the visual. The most troubling for me is, are two things. One, the front setback from Mount Lucas Road being reduced to just over 4 feet from the required 25 feet, if I understand correctly. This reduces the opportunity for appropriate landscaping and an attractive visual appearance from Mount Lucas Road. So I would urge the landscaping design to be as sensitive as possible to that issue if the setback cannot be changed. In removing 16 trees, I understand that many will be replaced, but in addition to those north of the parking lot, I would suggest some be placed within the parking lot, between spaces, in order to reduce the appearance of a large asphalt terrain, to the extent that the asphalt can be, and I think you've already covered this, it should be semi-pervious in order to facilitate water penetration. My other concern is with the lights in the parking lot, which I understand would be left on all night at a reduced level and then raised in intensity during an emergency. That's appropriate, but I want to be sure that the design of the lights provides 100% of the illumination directed down, so there is no obvious light pollution going up, which has been a problem all over the world. Now, I understand from the application that there will be sidewalks replaced on both sides of Mount Lucas Road. On the east side, I would urge, it's not clear to me how that, what the details of that design, but I would urge that it include a grass median between the curb and the hard The signal light at the corner of Valley Road and Mount Lucas will be updated, and again, I would urge that that be designed with automatic pedestrian green for the, whenever the green shows in either direction. So to summarize, my concerns are both visual and audible, and I hope that the designers will be cognizant and sensitive to those issues.
Could I ask you a question about the noise aspect of things? We have the police vehicles parked across, well, off this building. When they go out to an emergency, do they start their siren immediately, or do you hear that? Sorry?
Sometime.
Sometime. And you, but you're worried that these vehicles would make more noise than that?
I'm just asking that it be kept as little as necessary for the vaccine.
Okay. Thank you.
Happy to speak to it. Thank you. Yeah, so on the sirens, what will happen is the traffic light at Valley and Witherspoon, and the traffic light at Valley and 206, there's a system that we use where when we pull out, the emergency lights on the vehicles actually activate those traffic lights to turn green for us, so the traffic is stopped in the other directions and we get the right of way. Our crews don't use the sirens every time they pull out. I mean, if there's traffic there that's in the way, yes, they're going to use the sirens, but we're not, you know, it's not like TV. We're not blowing the siren from the second we get in the vehicle to the second we get to wherever we're going. We use it prudently as needed. And then I just want to just comment that we did, we actually moved the building along Mount Lucas further back, so the setback has been increased, so it's no longer the 4 feet, 9 inches, or whatever. The actual distance...
More than 4 feet.
Yeah, well, the setback, I think, is about 10, but the actual distance from the curb to the edge of the buildings is like 24 feet or so. And there will actually be a gra... And there will actually be a grass strip between the curb and the sidewalk that should allow us to put small trees in there.
Okay. I know there's a reference to a rain garden on the east side, and I don't know what that looks like, but if it facilitates the improvement of the landscaping and the view of a large building, that would be most grateful. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. The only other comment was on the parking lot lights. Again, we, I know in the original application, we talked about the lights being at eighty percent after a certain hour, blah, 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 but our intention is at eleven fifteen at night, we're turning all the lights out, because our crews change at eleven, and again at seven AM, so there's no reason for us to leave the parking lot on light. The parking lot lights on overnight, however, there will be some lighting that will be on in, on Long Valley Road, where the apparatus pull out of the building, but on the parking lot, those will be turned off.
You have a statement to make?
Can you hear me?
You have to talk to our attorney, tell her who you are.
Sir, if you'd state your name for the record, and then we just swear you in.
Sure. My name is Steve Rounds. I live at eleven Terhune Road, which, two months ago, had a nice ice skating rink, but now has a reflecting pool there. Anyway, if anyone-
Mr. Rounds, if you swear affirm your testimony-
Oh, I swear.
This evening will be truthful. Thank you.
Consider me sworn in. Two questions. Does anyone know the fate of the fuel pumping station? Everything looks very nice on the plan and very pretty. I could see it damaged by the possibility of that refueling station. I don't know what the board knows about the possibility of that happening. Could someone address that?
The fueling station will be relocated, and that's that horseshoe that you see dashed in on the drawing. It'll be, it'll be a little bit bigger than what's there currently on the existing fueling station. It will be above ground. I believe it will have a canopy. It will be screened from Mount Lucas, and that's essentially it.
Okay. The other question I have regards traffic flow. By cutting off that extension that now is Terhune, which has become the parking lot, it's very nice that you put on Valley the proposal of turning left onto 206, which allows essentially two accesses to go south on 206, one from Cherry Valley intersection, and one from the Valley Road. By eliminating the Terhune, you have eliminated three right turn accesses down to two. Is there any idea of how that's going to affect traffic at either of the two intersections that will, you'll be able to turn right on?
So by eliminating the Terhune exit, obviously, there was a concern that, you know, what will the impact on traffic be? And there's, there's several traffic improvements that will be done. The first is at 206 and Cherry Hill, and that's actually going to be done by DOT, and that will be upgrades to the single signal, but also adding additional lanes. So right now, there's a left and a through lane, and a right turn lane. They're going to actually add, you'll have a dedicated left turn lane, a through lane, and a right, and also two lanes coming across. They're adding lanes, we're going to, then the municipality will be adding turn lanes on Mount Lucas, as was indicated. We're upgrading the signal at Witherspoon and Valley, and that will have, again, left turn lanes there. The signal at Valley and Route 206, in the interim, initially, it will only be an emergency signal. There will not be the ability to make the left there. We are hoping to get that to be a full signal, although we don't have DOT approval for that at this time.
Thank you.
Are there any other people who wish to make a comment?
Yes. Harold Jerry. I reside at twenty-eight Terhune.
And Mr. Jerry-
And I do swear to-
Thank you.
-tell the truth. Thank you. I'm Mike Suber's next door neighbor, and although my house faces Terhune, from the upstairs back windows, I can see the light at Cherry Hill Road on 206. My, my wife and I, we bought that, we moved into that house in nineteen eighty-four, so we've been there thirty-some years. And actually, I think I know that area pretty well. As an undergrad, my senior year, there was a momentary period, the university was letting people live off campus, and I and four very hardworking, serious classmates of mine lived on, at 226 John Street. I little thought that fifteen years later, I'd be moving back into Princeton. I thought, when I left Princeton in sixty-nine, that I would never be back, and fifteen years later, I'm within half a mile of my residence on 226 John Street. My concern really is the traffic aspect of this. I've heard nothing so far that there actually has been a traffic study as to what the impact of closing the extension of Terhune Road will be. And I believe, as an amateur, observe, going through this intersection for the last thirty-some years, that it will be very seriously detrimental to the flow of traffic. But first, before I get to the traffic, I was a little, when I first heard about this building, we bought on Terhune Road so that we would have sidewalks, so that our kids could walk to school, so that we could walk uptown. We've observed the building, of the municipal building, we've observed the building of the fire station, and when I initially heard that the First Aid and Rescue Squad would be coming to the area, it seemed completely logical and consistent with the focus of municipal services in this part of the community. What I did not appreciate, until I actually walked in and started looking at the plans, was the size of this building and the, and the closing of Terhune Road. I mean, this building is, one of the municipal memos refers to it as sprawling. It is, its footprint is, you know, a third again as big as the fire station. It's, you know, seventy-five percent is footprint of the municipal hall, which is much larger. We're talking about a sixteen thousand square foot building with a fifteen thousand square foot footprint, and that, it really takes up, I mean, that's why you have to consolidate these, try to consolidate these two lots. And looking at the footprint, I mean, the fire station footprint is eight thousand square foot. The fire station, with its fire trucks, has about half of the footprint of this building, and I don't necessarily think, I mean, we're talking about aesthetics a little bit. This building, it's a one-story building, but the windows, I mean, it has sort of, the ground floor, the best to me, looking at the renderings and the slides, the side of this building that faces the municipal hall with the bays, the glass is attractive. The rest of it has a bunker look, all the way around. We have, you know, eight bunk, eight bedrooms facing Mount Lucas with sort of small windows, and it really is, it's almost like a suburban building put down in a municipal setting. We can't have a second floor, because although the interior of this building, less than forty percent of it is space for the parking of vehicles, the rest is all, it's, the rest is all meeting rooms, kitchens, social areas, all, I understand, necessary for the operation of a organization like this, but it has resulted in a building that is really, yeah, if you're out in the suburbs and you have a large lot, maybe you can build a building like this, but this is a, a little bit of a congested municipal area, and this building is, to me, inconsistent with the other buildings in the area and the way it's designed. A single-story building that presents sort of a very stern face to 206, to the Cherry Hill Road extension, and to Mount Lucas. Now, that, having said that, I get into this traffic aspect. The traffic, there does not appear to have been a traffic study, and we're, just as I've watched the building of the municipal building, the fire station, I've also, I'm not exactly sure why, but this is, the left turns, if you're coming from my part of town, and you want to make a left turn on 206, you can't do it on Valley Road anymore, you can't do it on Jefferson Road, so two of those left turns have been closed. That left Ewing, and it left the light at Cherry Hill Road, and it left Terhune. A lot of people, and that left turn on Terhune, syphons off a lot of traffic that's coming along Valley Road and doesn't want to wait for the light at Cherry Hill, makes a left turn, and then a left turn southbound on Route 206. Traffic comes, we have, with the buildup of the, you know, the medical office buildings on Bond Drive, we have, at rush hour, we have cars backed up, Terhune in front of our house, waiting to sort of get onto Mount Lucas. Actually, a fair number of those cars, instead of getting on Mount Lucas, dart across Mount Lucas, and then make the left turn onto 206. If all, we are talking about two through streets here, Valley and Terhune, that are bringing all of the traffic from the east side of town, and we're focusing, making all of that traffic turn right, go up, and wait for the light at Cherry Hill. In recent years, there has been a tremendous amount of traffic that now comes down that Cherry Hill Road. So when you're waiting to make a left turn southbound on Route 206, you have to wait for the oncoming traffic to cross the road. This is all, none of this is discussed in this application. There's a memorandum of understanding, I understand, which I was not given, I don't know what it says, but evidently, the municipality will take steps to alleviate the traffic problems. There's no definition yet in this application of what the traffic problems are, of whether the steps that the municipality is considering are adequate, are, and I firmly believe that they are not adequate to do this problem. You just look up here, and you, there's an absence of really crosswalks. If you're coming down Mount Lucas, the crosswalk is going to, it's going to be at the light. So you're talking about facilitating sidewalk traffic and bikes. If they're coming down Mount Lucas on the 206 side of Mount Lucas, somehow, they, they have to go to the light, the Cherry Hill light, and cross, then they come back, and there's no crosswalk at Terhune to get across there. You have to go down to the light at Valley Road. So it's, I, I don't, any specific mention of a specific step in the papers I've seen seems to be completely, first of all, they haven't defined the problem, so I suspect the solution, I firmly believe the solutions are completely inadequate. Now, there's talk about putting in a light at Valley Road on 206, so that you will open up, but that's in the future. It needs to be addressed now as part of this whole process. The, the thing that concerns me a little bit is I don't understand how, it's sort of like a lack of sympathy for, people don't understand that streets and roads are paths that people follow. Yes, they're in cars, but the cars have people in them, and it's how we live our life, it's how we get around. We do as much walking as we can, but to all of a sudden turn this little corner of Princeton into a, sort of a siphon or a funnel of traffic that that's all supposed to get through the Cherry Hill light, I am very concerned by that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the case? Would you come and do the same thing?
Hello. My name is Catherine Vishnik, and I live at fourteen Terhune Road.
And Ms. Vishnik, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So I live right on the corner, which is visible in the slide right now. It's the really acute corner right across from the parking lot, and I just want to say that I agree with everything that my neighbors have spoken thus far about the noise concerns, and about the visual concerns, and about the traffic concerns in particular. And I'd also wanted to add that I have a baby daughter, and I look forward to taking her to Community Park School in a few years and walking along this stretch, and the idea of having, like, this increased traffic patterns, making it dangerous. I see young children walking down Terhune and down Valley Road, going towards the Community Park School every morning, in, by foot, from the surround, from the neighborhood, and to have emergency vehicles, which on occasion will be traveling very fast, to get to the emergencies, that is, to increase the number of them in this area, concerns me for the safety of the, of the children. And, so I wanted to add that to everything that has been said before.
Thank you very much. Are there any other people? I see none. Do you want to make any comment again about the traffic? I think-
Sure.
It's potentially a problem, and at least in short-
So, a couple of things. First of all, as, as discussed earlier, the, the traffic improvements themselves are actually not part of this application. They will be done by the municipality. There was a traffic study done. There is a concern with the traffic in the area, and our, the town's traffic consultant is confident that the proposed improvements will address the traffic adequately. So the, I mean, to answer the concern, there was a traffic study done, and the proposed improvements will address the concerns of closing Terhune. And just one other thing, there will be, when the municipality does the improvements to Mount Lucas, there will be pedestrian improvements at all the signals, the sidewalks will be upgraded, bike path will be included on the, on the east side of Mount Lucas. So a lot of those issues, those concerns that were raised, will be addressed with the municipal improvements.
Thank you. Mr. Towne, do you need to make a comment at this point?
Probably not, but I should sum up and simply say, we thank you very much for your attention. I think the use variance is, has been made clear from the testimony. The FAR variance is minor. There are a number of setback variances. We acknowledge that the land that we've been given to work with is small and tight, and that the concern that we all have is that we try to make as much use of it as we can for the future. So there's an awful lot going on within the building, and fingers are crossed that it lasts as long as the current building has lasted the squad, and we didn't show you all the pictures of things stacked on top of each other, and the space that has been taken up and used as efficiently as they could use it over the years. It's, it's, we worked hard with SBRB to tighten it up just a touch, and it's an essential facility for the squad, and therefore for the town. So we remind you that for a use variance, we need five affirmative votes, and we hope we've got seven, but we, we need five for the bulk variances. We need four votes, but we hope that we've answered your questions.
Good. Thank you very much. So we'll go into executive set. That's when we are in principle talking to each other to try and understand what a sensible outcome.
I think, first, I have a question for Mr. West, and it related, relates to the traffic issue. Will that actually be considered and voted on by mayor and council? You said it's, the town approves. What is that process?
It's, it's the mayor and council. They're aware of the traffic improvements, they're aware of this project, they've seen it, they've, they've endorsed this project, they're putting the funding up for the improvements. So I mean, to answer your question, it is the governing body that has to make that ultimate decision.
Okay. Then I, I could see, that being a condition, if we were to approve this, if, if the traffic issue, which is not, as they point out, didn't present it to us, and it's not part of our deliberation, then I can see a condition that if we approve this, then it's conditioned on the town approving traffic changes.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll let council maybe answer this, but I don't believe this board can put that, I mean, the applicant has no control over what the municipality does.
In this board, certainly.
I mean, this applicant is actually, I, I believe they're putting money- I mean, this applicant is actually, I, I believe they're putting money up towards the signal at Witherspoon, but that's all part of the MOU, it's not part of this application.
Okay, but normally, an application comes to us, traffic is an aspect that we get to consider, and we get presented with traffic studies, so this is a very unusual.
That's correct. It's, it's a unique application, it's, it's a joint venture with the municipality and PFRS. That's, so the municipality has agreed to do the traffic improvements. Nobody here can guarantee that the municipality is going to do those improvements, however, that's what the MOU is for, they've indicated, I mean, I don't know why they wouldn't. The, the municipality has to answer to the residents when the traffic doesn't work.
Are there comments by other people that we need to, to talk about? The lighting, we've taken care of adequately, in the sense that we've taken care of the parking lot, lighting, and I assume that applies to surface lighting on the building itself, that, that has the same time schedule.
I, I do find the concern about closing Terhune concerning to me as well, and I, it actually led me to wonder.
But we have nothing to do with that, the town has made that decision.
Right, but it led me to wonder, and I didn't think to ask before, in the parking lot area, is it open, can a car come in from both Mount Lucas and State Road, so where is the entrance?
It's on Mount Lucas.
It's only Mount Lucas.
Okay, maybe that was said before, but, you know, because then I started to think, well, maybe someone would just say, let's just.
Zooms in.
And I, I am, I did wonder before, and then when the issue was raised again about the, you know, the sprawling size of the building, I don't, I don't really know, I don't know that we really heard why it couldn't have been made two-story, at least not to my satisfaction, in some areas of it. So that leaves me, you know, that, that does impact a lot of things, including.
But, but actually, the two-story isn't before, if we're looking at a particular site plan, and we need to make a decision about it, and so we need to worry about setbacks. I personally think that those are properly dealt with, given this building and given the site, I have no problem with that. The situation of the transformer is logical from the viewpoint of where the power supply comes in, and evidence has been presented that it will be properly screened. The generator and whatever, which is a noisy beast, is against the highway on the other side, and so I don't think that presents any problem, and its setback is, as far as I am concerned, adequate. The building height now doesn't represent a problem. So I think on all of those issues, I'm, I'm happy.
The, the wild card about the, the apron or the, the road that's going to go through with the fueling station, which again, we have no, nothing to say about.
That's nothing to do with this, the town hasn't made a proposal.
Right.
In principle, that semicircle or part of a circle is, is a proposed site, and we have been told that it will be similar to the thing that's there now, which is ugly as sin, and, but it will be moved into a position and properly screened, so that it's only offensive to the oak trees and not pedestrians. Other things people are concerned about?
Are we satisfied on signage?
I'm sorry?
Are we satisfied on the signage?
I think there's too much, as I've said, I would, I would think, three sides of the building, I think it's quite legitimate to have signage on. I don't like the fact that it's illuminated, but that's, if it's, if the illumination is turned off so that it's not illuminated all the time, that's fine. And, so, the, the, I guess the, the, the sign at ground level is, is one we should perhaps be more concerned about, there's.
Freestanding sign?
There's a freestanding sign which I found on the web, the picture, and I think that was more or less what was shown to us. Whether that's necessary, if we've got all the signs on the building, it's unclear to me, but if it's there at the bottom, that's the one.
And personally, as it relates to the signage on 206, I think that given the speed at which traffic moves through, having more signage may help people make good choices when they need to turn, if they want to get to the building, to identify it more readily. So the freestanding sign facing, I guess the, the faces of each of the sign is facing north and south on 206, is that correct?
No, I think there's one on, on the west side of the building, if I remember correctly. Mount Lucas, 206, yeah.
Right, so there's, there's signage on the west, on Route 206, there's signage that you would see from the parking lot, looking towards the north, and there's the logo looking to the south to Valley Road, and the freestanding sign.
What is the point of having the signage on the parking lot when you have a ground level sign about the entrance to the parking lot? I, I think that that sign is essentially pointless.
If it wasn't illuminated, would that be better?
Even if it wasn't illuminated.
Okay.
But I think, wouldn't that sign, when you're over on, at the light going to Cherry Hill, that sign would be visible on top of the.
Behind the oak trees, there's all, if you look at the line over there, there are trees screening it. So I don't, I mean, it's kiff kiff as far as I am concerned at this point.
I, I think we'd be happy to drop the illumination of the sign on the north side of the building, that you'd see from the parking lot, and from Cherry Hill, if that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know that we all agree on that, do we?
I'm sorry?
I don't know that we all agree to that.
Well, I don't know, this is what we're doing to each other.
I think the signage is fine, as they're proposing it, frankly.
Well, what is your feeling about it?
Mine, I feel it's fine.
You think it's fine?
Yeah.
You think it's fine?
She feels it's fine.
So if, it, it appears that by and large, people think it's fine.
Well, I don't know, there are four other people. We've only heard from one of the four.
I'm okay with the signage.
Yeah.
I concur.
Yeah. So they got the five votes they need to get signed. The D variance is just, we've been through, I think that very thoroughly, and I, I think that that has been properly established by, by the presentations that we've had. So tell me what we've missed in our somewhat random discussion.
Well, actually, I'm not sure that you've missed anything.
Okay, so then if we.
You, you've summarized the D variances and indicated that you believe there's been adequate testimony from the planner for the positive and the negative criteria, then there's been testimony about a variety of bulk variances, the setbacks, number of parking spaces, many variances which the applicant is presenting to you as C2 variances, and they're not saying it's a hardship, they're just saying they feel that it's necessary for the project, and it's going to, should we say, promote the purposes of zoning, present a better plan, a better use of the site. So I don't think you've, I don't think you've missed anything in terms of what's in front of you for consideration now, what you need to vote on.
Okay, so then we need a motion. So does anyone want to make a motion to accept this proposal as modified?
So moved.
We have a motion to accept as modified, is there a second to the motion?
A second?
We have a second to the motion. So can you call the roll for a podium?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Davich? I'm sorry. Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Here.
Thank you.
Carry your audience in on board.
Thank you.
Thank you all, we appreciate it.
Good. We now have other cases to hear, so if you could vacate as quietly as possible, that would be good. So this is a.
Good. Congratulations.
Yes. They have to leave there. Thank you very much. Could you vacate the room unless you're presenting a case? We have three more to do. The next case the board is going to hear is 259 Edgerstone Road, which carries the case number Z1717556. So Mr. Bridger, it's your turn to read into the record what we need to know before we hear from.
Mr. Bridger, before you begin, just note that the application is in order, the noticing is correct, board has jurisdiction, and will consider you under oath for the remainder of the evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Applicant Daniel J. Barsky, or L. Barsky, is requesting a C1, C2 variance to permit construction of a new single-family house on a non-conforming lot, the lot does not meet the required lot frontage width and area, subject located in the R2 zone in the former Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance, subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with 10B 253, 255, and 246. The existing single-family use is permitted as of right, subject lot is non-compliant with respect to lot area requirement of 65,340 square feet or an acre and a half, the existing is 32,299 square feet, it's also non-compliant with the required lot frontage and lot width requirement, which is 175, and both of those are 125. The existing single-family lot will be demolished and a new home will be constructed. The applicant should advise the board as to whether they have contacted any adjoining landowners to inquire whether they wish to buy the subject lot or sell a portion of their lot to create a complying lot. Applicant indicates the new single-family home will comply with all applicable bulk regulations, staff did request plans for the proposed house, it's my understanding the applicant is not have them at this point. So the variances for this are, lot frontage requirement 175 existing is 125, a lot requirement of 175, and the existing is also 125, and the lot area requirement of 65,340, and the existing is 32,299. I'd be glad to ask, answer any questions they've considered, or requested consideration under the C1 and C2 criteria.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Bridger?
How do we approve something that we don't know what it looks like?
If we don't have house plans, it's not a requirement, you can't request a site plan on a single-family home, we just have to assume that it's going to comply with the, the bulk requirements, or they'll be back for a, a variance, but it's a question we've dealt with many times on these type of applications.
I mean, some applicants have been willing to provide their plans, some have indicated they don't have plans prepared yet, that they're coming in for the variance, then they'll go ahead and prepare the plans.
But really, we're discussing the size of the.
Exactly, exactly.
And the applicant is saying that, given, if he's allowed to build on this, it will observe all of the appropriate.
That's right.
Rules for a lot.
That's right.
It's just that it's a lot that's too small, and because we plunked down the zoning after the lot was established.
But how big will the house be, then?
The lot required is 175 by 175, and how it's.
I mean, it could be the maximum size, which would be, you know, 18.8 percent. Usually it is the minimum, the maximum's the minimum size, so, but I think Daniel may speak to some of that in his presentation.
All right, I defer.
Yeah, I, I think we'd, I'd, we'd probably like to know the location of it to some degree with it on the site. I hope that's part of it.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board, my name is Ryan Kennedy from Stevens Liam, attorney for the applicant tonight, having worked a little bit on that PFRS project, I assure you this is only 95% as complicated as what you just heard, but in all seriousness, we'll be very quick. The applicant tonight, this is his personal home, he, he lives there, we're here for three C variances that would, we're requesting relief either as a C1 or C2, these are all conditions that exist on this property now, they always have, the lot has always been undersized as to frontage, as to width, and as to lot area. The applicant is here to seek relief so that he can consider whether to rebuild a house on it or not. We have one exhibit tonight, slideshow which would ask to have marked as applicant one, the pages are numbered, and we'll refer to them by page numbers, if that is okay with the board attorney.
Yeah.
And we'll have one witness, Mr. Barsky, we could have him sworn in, I'll hand over the show.
Absolutely. Mr. Barsky, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members, I have a short PowerPoint presentation describing some of the things that Derek already spoke.
Can we speak more into the microphone, your attorney has got a better voice for.
That's, that's his job. Better now?
Yes.
Okay. One more time. My name's Daniel Barsky, I'll be doing a short presentation on my lot on 259 Edgerstone Just a brief history, my wife and I have lived there for the past four years, it's a little bit over 1,000 square feet, it's a 70, 60-year-old ranch home, it has one bedroom and one bathroom. During the time that we were living there, it suited our needs, but because it is old and small, has one bedroom, one bathroom, at this point, we're looking to redevelop and do something with it in the future. This first slide shows the lot on 259 Edgerstone Road, outlined in green is the lot lines, and outlined in yellow is the building envelope. The building envelope will comply with all of the other bulk requirements, including the setbacks, the impervious coverages, FAR, et cetera. We are, however, looking for relief in three of the criterias, which is minimum lot area, where 65,340 square feet is required, and the lot has 32,299 square feet. The lot width requirement is 175 feet, existing is 125 feet, and same with lot frontage, the requirement is 175 feet, and this lot has 125 feet. This next slide here is an expanded view of the tax map of 259 Edgerstone Road, which is outlined in green, and the surrounding neighborhood. This image actually includes, looks like, three blocks of the. This image actually includes, looks like, three blocks of the tax map area. And as you can see, every single one of the lots does not comply with the zoning requirements in regards to either lot area, lot width, or lot frontage. So there's, the big square there on the side is at the Hun School. Otherwise, all the residential homes do not comply with the zoning. There are a couple that meet the requirement for lot width, but do not meet the requirement for lot area. But 90% don't meet any of the criterias that this lot also doesn't meet. And all 100% of them do not comply with the zoning bulk requirements. This is my last slide. It shows 259 Edgerstone Road, which is outlined in green, and the two adjacent lots. In the rear of this property is the Hun School soccer fields. And in front of it is the road, of course. So the two adjacent lots do not have enough lot area to make 259 Edgerstone conforming without increasing their own nonconformity in lot area. So that addresses reaching out to the neighbors to buy property. There was no opportunity to do that here. That's it. Quick presentation. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Does anyone in the audience here to address this case? You've seen what we do, so I'm sure you know how to go through it.
Yes, Fred Cooper. I'm at 251 Edgerstone, which is right next door.
And Mr. Cooper, do you swear affirm any testimony you provide will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm interested, just for background, the fields behind are not the Hun School fields. They're the Greenwood Meadows Park fields. Just so you have a good context of where the property is. I was interested to hear that they're supposed to be offering the lots to us as an opportunity to buy. We were not offered, that offer wasn't made to us. Correct? I assume, attorney, that's true? Or you'll acknowledge that?
So, the testimony before was that it was not possible to acquire any property from an adjacent lot without making those lots more nonconforming. There is no property available to be purchased. So the, I don't mean to speak for Mr. Bridger's language in his memo, but the idea is to reach out to neighbors to attempt to make a conforming lot from property surrounding it. In this situation, because the lots to the left and the right and behind, which I guess is publicly owned, there was no property that could possibly be subdivided off those lots without making those lots even more noncompliant than they are now. So while the, I don't mean to say boilerplate, but the request usually presented to the board is whether the offer has been made. Here, there was nothing that could have been purchased that would affect the situation.
So, as you noted, it's kind of hard, you know, we're neighbors, but it's kind of hard to make any sort of judgments without knowing what the house would be like. There was, I think, in one of your original plans, there were, there's something that showed basically, I think you're leaving five or six trees on the property that borders ours. In your, I guess if you can go back to the... Yeah, the next one. Right there. It looks like you have, we've lived in the adjacent house since 92. There's a wall, a fence that is on their property that borders ours and it's very, very treed. I also see that, you know, you're, it looks like you're talking about the opportunity to build up to 15 feet from the lot line, which to me seems very aggressive, particularly if your plan is to remove all the trees on the, you know, that border ours literally on the lot line. So I would hope that you would at least consider keeping all that, keeping the fence that's been there for probably 50 years. Also, in terms of setbacks, you know, the neighborhood has had a lot of tear downs. It would be nice to have the house farther back. Right now, it looks like it's quite far close to the street. I don't know if these are purviews of your board, but just a point to be made. I would say, again, there's another issue, which is whether Stony Brook runs behind the property and there's drainage or the property flows down. So I don't know if your plans are to build swales, but we've had a lot of drainage problems as the houses have been built. So I'd hope you'd take that into consideration and not, you know, build your house such that water just kind of accumulates in our backyard but follows the natural flow of the land. So those are comments that I would like to make. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, in the past, the boards had some, I guess, standard conditions with respect to consulting municipal arborists about tree removal, drainage, review of...
And lighting, yeah.
And lighting.
Of course. So we're certainly happy to agree to the standard conditions, absolutely, especially as to lighting.
Good. We have somebody else.
Yes, hi. Karen Gordon, and I swear to tell the truth.
Okay.
Okay. I also live at 251 Edgerstone Road. And we're, we've been happy to have the Barskys as neighbors. We were a bit surprised at the size of the house that is being proposed, but we do understand, you know, the need to create more space for a family or whoever's living in the house. I have a couple of other concerns, though. One was, is about the setback, only because on Edgerstone Road, all the houses, whether they're brand-new or they're older, really conform to kind of a visual commonality that is part of the character of the neighborhood and part of the character of Edgerstone. So I don't know if that can be further defined.
We would not require the house to be set back so that it is consistent with the houses on the street.
Yeah, and maybe, you know, I just can't understand the drawings, but that would be a concern.
Yeah, so maybe I should have addressed that a little better. There is a prevailing setback, which we need to meet the requirement, meaning that the houses on the street, to the left, to the right, we have to be within, I think, one or two feet of where those houses are right now off the street. In addition to that, this is an existing survey. So that's the house that's there now. And the yellow line, which shows the building envelope, is only addressing setbacks. But there are other criterias which would limit filling up that area. So...
You mean with the building?
Right, exactly. So other criterias like FAR, height to setbacks, they would restrict using all that area. You know, we certainly wouldn't be able to and wouldn't want to. And also to address the trees along the side. It's in our interest to keep them as well.
Yeah, sure.
To have a buffer between neighbors. And we do work extensively with engineers and municipal engineers and arborists for water runoff and saving the trees. And in my experience, the water runoff is usually better after we do the new home.
That hasn't always been our experience on the other side of our house, so...
Maybe not, but I assure you...
We're sensitive to that.
Okay.
And the slope of the land is such that it slopes downward towards your house.
Right. We know, but we're going to work closely with the municipal engineers and, you know, with neighbors and make sure it all works properly.
Okay, thank you.
The town engineer has a responsibility for...
Pardon me?
The town engineer has a...
Yeah, they do, but it doesn't always work that way. Sorry. It still flows during rainstorms and there's still puddling and overflow. Sometimes the engineers don't always, aren't always there to witness, you know, what the reality is. So I think that is an ongoing concern, you know, that may affect the Barskys as well. So that's just something to consider. I would just also like to comment, I'm glad you mentioned the trees, because I think that does continue to maintain the character of the Edgerstone neighborhood that we're concerned about. I just wanted to recommend that the, perhaps if you're, if the equipment that's building the house, you know, I don't know how you're going to control that with tree roots, but that could be a consequence of weakening trees, causing them to fall in one direction or another on your house or on our house. So that's, you know, that's always, it's always something to be concerned about. And there's a particular tree that is actually very special and I'm not sure you're aware of that, but it's a very rare species of deciduous conifer. And they're very few in the United States. And Mrs. Gerber, who previously owned the property, built, grew that tree. And it's about 80 to 100 feet. I'm sure you know which one I'm talking about. But it is a specimen tree. And, you know, we would hate to see that being destroyed inadvertently or any other way. It originally came from China and was, after World War II, there were a couple that were brought to the United States. And so I think Princeton's very lucky to have that specimen tree. There's only one other one that I know of, which is in Marcon Park. So you're very lucky, but I hope that you can maintain that. And then, you know, we just want to make sure that we can maintain the beauty of that part of Edgerstone Road because there have just been so many changes. And I think the habitat and the shade and the temperature and the wildlife has, the birds have suffered as a result of some of those changes. So we just want to encourage you to think about those things. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Bridger?
Yeah, I just want to clarify regarding the prevailing front yard setback. That only applies to the R5 through the R9 zone, and this is in the R2 zone. So...
Well, we can make a condition.
Yeah, you could make that a condition if you would accept the condition.
And Mr. Barsky offered it, essentially.
Just for clarity, would the condition be to match the literal prevailing or to follow the formula? I don't know if anyone's calculated the formula. I would hate to be in a situation where we're getting an odd result by going through the, you know, there's a formula where you throw out some of the...
Well, typically, it would be the prevailing front yard setback usually is calculated by the engineering staff and it's 500 feet within the subject property and you take the high and low out of the range. So that was, would be the formula that we would apply to it, if you're agreeable to that.
The way the topography is on this lot, and that's part of the reason that we didn't have plans prepared, it's unique in the way that on the left side, it slopes down drastically and in the back as well. So, you know, we need to come up with some type of design to address the topography on that lot and to make sure the water works and to save as many trees as possible. So in my experience, I don't want to commit to having a prevailing setback if it's not necessary and then because it has to be in that place, then have to take trees down.
You just agreed to it a minute ago, I thought.
Well, I thought it was a requirement, so...
Well, we're asking that you, I mean...
Okay.
There was comments about the streetscape of the neighborhood. I think, you know, are you going to accommodate that?
I think the concern is, though, that since it isn't required, it hasn't yet been calculated. And my concern would be that we, you know, often it's appropriate to ask, seek a variance for it. And since it hasn't been calculated, I wouldn't want to have to come back and ask for a variance if it turns out prevailing.
But what's the 40-foot prevailing on the drawing?
Yeah, that would be fine.
I'm asking, was this, was this calculated by you, your engineer?
The engineer, I guess. Yeah, that would be fine.
I mean, I don't know if that, I mean, I heard a concern from the neighborhood and it's not only on this application, it's in this neighborhood. It's number one, it's about mature trees being taken down. And number two, it's about the setbacks, you know, which I think you're usually, you know, sympathetic to.
We can agree.
Protecting the setback.
We can agree to that. That's fine.
So...
Do you have one more?
I... Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
Hi. My name's Andrew Thomas. I live at 256 Edgerstone, across the road. You were very vague then about the setback, I have to say. You don't seem to know what you were agreeing to there, so... And nobody, you haven't been and seen the Coopers' house. You probably need to measure where their house is before you agree to anything.
I missed entirely the point you were making.
Well, you seem very vague about the setback you were talking about. If you haven't seen where the Coopers' house is, I don't see how you know where that setback is that you're going to agree to.
Sir, I was actually going to try and clarify that, but because I didn't hear your name, please?
Andrew Thomas.
Andrew Thomas. And Mr. Thomas, where do you live?
256 Edgerstone.
Okay. And we're going to assume that what you've stated today is truthful because I didn't get a chance to hear you. Okay.
So you've expressed concern about the setback?
Well, just because you...
Because it's not defined properly?
Well, if you don't know where their house is, you don't see how you can agree that the setback is going to match.
Mr. Barsky, I think it's a good question to ask. I think Mr. Bridger understood your comment to be, you'll comply with the prevailing setback as calculated by staff.
Yeah, of course, with the ordinance. Yeah, that's fine. Yes. Yeah.
You had another concern?
Yeah. The ordinance has a formula for calculating it.
The formula has a methodology of formula to calculate it.
It doesn't happen to apply to this zone, but we would agree to apply it.
So, okay, well, as far as I'm concerned, you can build any kind of house you like in our neighborhood. You can build a McMansion or any monstrosity. I don't really mind. But I've seen many tear downs in our neighborhood. And invariably, in the vast majority of cases, the lots are more or less razed to the ground in terms of the trees and the fauna there. So each time the town and our neighborhood loses more trees and mature trees at that. I just wondered, in this case, has the, for example, has the town arborist visited the lot before the plans were drawn up? Because it seems crazy that you have this 15-feet thing all the way around. If you saw the lot, there's many, many trees there that should not be removed, in my opinion. And it's pretty obvious that these trees need to be protected at the planning stage because I've seen, you know, developers and residents alike say all the right things at the right time, but when it comes to it, the trees are gone and the questions are asked later. And, you know, you say about, you have standard conditions and you say you have the town engineer's responsibility. But if you looked at our neighborhood, you would see that that obviously is not working correctly. The mayor and the council have recently signed up for the Princeton Climate Action Plan. And I'd like to say, in view of what I just said, I think it's time to stand behind these principles and protect our environment and to protect our lots from having trees removed unnecessarily. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have I missed anyone else who wishes to say something? Okay. So let's go into executive session. I would make a couple of additional comments on, if you get the variance approved. One of them concerns exterior lighting. That's a standard compliance that I seek. And that is that the light source is not visible from neighboring properties and there's no light spill onto neighboring properties.
Absolutely.
And in a small lot area, that's very important. And the second one, which really the town engineer takes care of, is whatever you do, you must not increase drainage from your property onto neighboring properties. So downspouts and so on. If you have a water flow, you need to put a retaining device in to mitigate the rate at which water is released.
Indeed.
So those would be two conditions I would put in. And it's my understanding you've agreed to a setback, mean setback of...
Indeed, yes.
Does anyone else have any things they want to add or any comments that we should... See, this is a typical Princeton problem because we did the zoning after the lots were there. We're always faced with this. And we haven't altered the ordinance.
I'm very uncomfortable with it. And I'm very uncomfortable with this, in part because I'm new to the board and I've never seen one of these before. And I'm uncomfortable approving something that, I don't know what we're approving. I mean, we're approving a lot size, but...
All we're doing is to say it's not possible to build it on this lot unless you get a variance for lot size because the plan that was plottoned to this said the lot should be a lot bigger. And evidence has been given, you can see here that all of the lots in this area are of the same size. And evidence has been given that you can't buy land from other lots without increasing their degree of noncompliance. So the green lot is what you're stuck with.
No, I understand that, but...
We don't stop people building houses.
But how do we know that the house they're going to build is going to conform?
Because we have a zoning office and people issue building permits on the basis of that being true.
Right. Well, I agree with you, but I'll vote no on this because I'm uncomfortable with it.
Okay. Okay. So that's your right, of course.
All right, well, I just...
Does anyone else have any comments?
I just want to note that and say and make sure that it's, you know, part of the awareness of the tree issue, that as far as I could tell, the largest tree on the property is not shown on this drawing, and it's in the front right corner. So just want to make sure that that isn't overlooked.
Okay. So we need a motion and a second to the motion.
Excuse me, is there one other point I am allowed to make? It's not confrontational, but just informational.
Oh, you're back again.
Yes, I'm back again.
I wondered...
Karen Gordon.
I was going to say something wrong.
Just, I think, from the standpoint of the engineering, just being aware that there is a, there's a spring and an underground stream that runs under our property as well as under your property and continues, that runs into Stony Brook. And the concern always is the pollution of Stony Brook, but equally importantly for individual property owners is whether those spaces in the back that are contiguous to Greenway Meadows, you know, will collapse one day because of the, because of this underground water system. So I would just add, informationally, it would be helpful to have this, the town pay closer attention to whether there is a weakness, a structural weakness in the soil and in that, that part that faces the fence of the Greenway Meadows.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's out of the realm of zoning that we are considering, and that is the area that the town engineer will deal with, I am sure.
Mrs. Coulson, just a question for you. The municipal ordinance would require that if any trees are torn down, the applicant has to go present an application. Now, arborist reviews it, you know, there are all kinds of standards for replacement, but are you looking for something beyond that when you know this tree, this large tree in the front?
No, I don't think it's, I don't believe it's the specimen tree. It's just that I, it's a large tree, which is not accounted for on this drawing, and I, I guess, my, my preference, maybe my request would be that it be taken into, it be preserved if, and be, and that there be enough space between the beginning of the house and where the roots are.
Yeah, and not be damaged during construction.
Right.
Okay.
Is that, I guess we'll add that in.
So we need a motion and a second to the motion.
So moved.
You move to approve with the constraints that we've added or with the...
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Could you call the roll for us, please, Claudia?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
No.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Valvani?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Here.
Thank you, is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the next case we have is 283 Mount Lucas Road, and that has the case That's a second-floor addition. That's too low for people sitting on this ill-designed podium to see. Use the, move it further out into the audience space, like that, and I'm sure we'll be able to see that.
What is my arm there?
Yeah. Can you all see? Mr. Bridger, can you tell us what we need to know? Madame, Monsieur?
Yeah, I'll note the notice thing is in order. The board has jurisdiction to hear the application. You're still sworn, Mr. Bridger.
Thank you. The applicant is LBB Construction, property is 283 Mount Lucas, and they are seeking a C2 variance to permit construction of a second-floor addition and a covered front porch in exception to the prevailing front yard setback. Additional setback variance is requested to prevent reconstruction of a garage in exception to the required site yard, required side yard setback. Property is located in the R6 zone, subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with 10B 253, 255, and 246 of the former Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. Existing single-family use is permitted as of right. The subject lot is complying with respect to the applicable bulk regulations, but the subject property is not complying with respect to the prevailing front yard setback, which is forty-nine feet. The existing is twenty-seven point nine-two, and it's also not compliant with regards to the right side yard setback, the requirement's fifteen, the existing's fourteen point eight-three. The applicant's proposing to expand the existing ranch-style home with a twelve-hundred-square-foot second-floor addition. Patio located on the front facade of the house will be removed to allow for expansion of the existing single-car garage to a two-car garage. The second floor will contain a master bedroom with a full bath, two additional bedrooms, full bath and a laundry room, and the existing one-car garage will be demolished. And as indicated earlier, a two-car garage will be built in its place. New covered front porch is proposed, and the existing rear deck will be demolished and replaced with a larger deck. Project requires a front yard variance, prevailing front yard variance is forty-nine point one-seven feet. The proposed is twenty-seven feet eleven inches, and the reconstruction of the garage violates the required right yard setback, the requirement is fifteen, and the proposal is fourteen feet one inch to the overhang, and they've requested consideration under the C2 criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Try to.
Thank you, Mr. Bridger.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, Board. Ryan Kennedy here for the applicant and the property. And I'll say, in this case, the application was brought by their contractor, which is a corporate entity. If the applicant had done the paperwork slightly differently, I probably wouldn't be seeing you tonight. But we have two witnesses this evening to help explain the proposed project and renovation of this ranch house here on Mount Lucas, on Mount Lucas Road. We have our architect and the developer. If we could have them both sworn in.
Could you state your names for the record, please?
Eric Holtermann.
And?
Lou Allo.
Gentlemen, raise your right hands. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, well, actually, you know, if we may, why don't we go right to the portable mic, and I'll have you do quickly, and I know you testified many times on similar subjects, but if you want to very quickly give the board, while you're walking over to the boards, your experience and involvement in the project, and we can start taking through what the owner here is asking to do.
My name's Eric Holtermann, partner at HMR Architects. I've been a partner there for about twelve years and have worked there for about eighteen years. A couple of things I want to mention about the setbacks, the side...
Mr. Holmer, one question. Mr. Holmer, you're a licensed architect in New Jersey?
That is correct, yes. The side yard setback that we're talking about, the existing wall is now two inches over the fifteen-foot requirement. We're actually not looking at rebuilding that wall, we're actually looking at keeping the same wall, but increasing the pitch of the roof so that there is some additional wall built on top of the existing wall, but we're not looking at building a new wall in that location. The other point is that where this wall and this wall are actually the existing front wall of the house, we're not, we're not making any changes there. This wall is actually set back, this wall is extended up, this wall, this bay window, we actually are coming forward one feet and two inches, and the porch, we're actually coming forward from this wall, five feet and eight inches. There is a complication...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Holtermann. Are these exhibits that you want marked?
Yeah, if we could mark the, for the record, the board that Architect's been referring to as this one, I'd like to have marked as A1. And that is...
That's a rendering of...
Yeah, describe that as a rendering of the project as envisioned to be completed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
The setback numbers are confusing because our survey says that the, that this front wall is thirty-seven feet back, but in the calculation for the prevailing setback, the engineering department from their map says that this wall is forty-four feet back. So in fact, there's a seven-foot discrepancy between our survey and the prevailing setback calculation. I went to the engineering department, talked to them, and they said, "Let's just stick with the forty-four number and talk about the changes of the, of the house in relation to where the front wall is now and the neighbors for the sake of the prevailing setback."
Perhaps if I could clarify, so just in, in terms of the actual existing setback, you're not, we're not, the proposal's not to move that front wall. It's a, it's a question of, one, what the prevailing setback is compared to what is existing, and then also some changes to the project that perhaps, you know, you're building over it or changing that. But you're not moving that wall forward or back. The existing front of the house stays as it has been for quite some time.
So when Derek said that, in fact, the proposed setback is twenty-seven feet, that's actually to the front of that step right there, based on our survey, but it's still, if we were working from the forty-four feet, it would be twenty-seven plus seven feet because there's that discrepancy between the survey and the, and the town map. So, so that you, so the, the point, though, is that with the porch, we're coming forward five feet eight inches, and then the steps, another three feet. So that's the, that's the addition. I, I read the zoning extremely carefully about the front porch and totally understood from the zoning that the porch could be in the forward of the prevailing setback. And then, as usual, I talked to Derek and he said, "Hmm, no, not really."
I think the lesson there is you should always talk to Derek first before anyone suggests doing anything.
Right. So, so the, so the point is that, that we're maintaining the existing front setback, the existing front wall of the house, except for this bay window, which is coming forward one foot two, this porch, which is coming forward five foot eight, and the steps, which are coming forward three feet in front of that. According to the town map, which shows this wall at forty-four feet back, the house to the left is thirty feet on that calculation, and the house to the right is forty-two feet. So in fact, this wall is already farther back than the houses on each side.
You don't happen to have images or anything else like that of those other two properties with those measurements, do you?
You know, I, another exhibit, I, this, so this board, the photograph, it's a streetscape.
Yeah, let's mark this as A2.
Photograph, it's a little bit small. Can I pass it around?
Yeah, please. First, let's mark it as A2, and then if you could describe what it depicts.
So the, in, on that streetscape, the top strip of photographs shows the photograph of the row of houses with the existing house in place, the lower strip.
When were they taken?
They're from Google Earth, so whenever, whenever that, whenever that...
Oh, I see, they're Google...
They're, they're Google, they're Google images. But they're, but they're, the other houses are...
So there have been a couple of these.
Yes, yes.
And may I ask, you've been to the site, and do the photos you've taken from Google Earth accurately depict your understanding of the surrounding?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So the other thing I would say about the addition is that it meets other requirements, it meets FAR, it meets other setbacks around the building. The forty-four-foot setback, when we use that number, actually runs right through the middle of the house. The prevailing setback line is, is, actually runs this way, pretty much under the ridge of the roof.
If you were to comply with the prevailing setback, would the house need to be relocated further back in that...
Completely, yes. Yes. If there are other questions, I mean, I think those are the, those are the primary issues here, but if there are other questions...
Well, perhaps, I know you have a couple of other exhibits. Would you be able to take the board through just a more thorough explanation of what the project itself is? I know we talked about it in terms of the two existing issues with both the setback and the side yard, or the prevailing setback and the side yard setback, but just in terms of what the applicant is actually looking to do.
Mr. Kennedy, I hate to interrupt, but I'm getting confused, and I don't know if perhaps the board is too. Mr. Bridger's memo references the prevailing front yard setback is forty-nine point seventeen feet. Mr. Holtermann, you keep talking about forty-four.
Oh, forty-four feet is, is the setback shown on...
Like they physically measured the current setback existing at forty-four feet. Forty-nine would be the calculated, do I have that right?
That's not quite right, no. Forty-four is what's...
Forty-nine is the...
I'm sorry, forty-four is what's measured for this piece of property. Forty-nine, after we throw out the neighbor to the left and someone else, and then count however many, the calculation is forty-nine. And forty-four feet is our house, according to this map.
So what does existing mean?
So the first-floor plan... Oh, I'm sorry.
I actually am getting more confused as time goes on. So then what does existing mean? Is that a hypothetical? What is that?
The existing is the existing setback to the front of the house, which I believe is twenty-seven feet eleven inches, something like that.
The, the proposed to the front of the steps in front of the porch.
So their main issue is the forty-nine-foot prevailing setback basically bisects the house in half. So anything they want to do within that setback requires a variance.
Right.
And perhaps clumsily, we've attempted to express the change in the physical house from where it currently is on the lot as opposed to that forty-nine-foot line. That perhaps was not the way to express it.
So, so I know this is a little far away, but, you know, here's the, the existing house, we're really not making many changes to the footprint of the house, but that dotted line is where the prevailing setback is.
We have another exhibit here, just so the, the record can be clear what we're looking at. Could you mark this one, we're up to three? And then just give the, again, for the record, what particular plan or map you're looking at?
A3 is a site plan showing the proposed work, the existing work, other plans, including zoning, zoning calculations on sheet A3. So the existing, you can, you can see the, the plan of the existing ranch house here. That plan doesn't change. We are pushing out this small bay window on the front in the bedroom, and then there's an area here between the house and the existing garage where there's a small screen breezeway. We're filling that in to align with the other front and rear wall to make that a two-car garage. That's, and, and the only other change then to the footprint is the addition of a porch at the front.
Are you tearing down this house?
No.
You're building off an original?
Yes, yes, yeah.
And just for my, because I went and looked at the site the other day, just to be, for me to be oriented, I wondered where the chimney is now is where the chimney will be going forward.
We're actually going to take that chimney away. That, that chimney is actually right here, and we're, we're taking the chimney away. And right in here is where there's that screen, there's like a little patio, side entrance in front of a screen porch, and that's right here, kind of in front of that garage door.
Okay, so the chimney's moving to the left.
The chimney's actually moving to the back of the roof and will come up through the middle of the roof. So at the first floor, and the, the interior is being renovated and reorganized with a larger single room in the back, kitchen in the front. And then these two rooms on the side stay similar to what they are already. Change here to have a two-car garage where there's currently a sing, a one-car garage and a, and a breezeway screen porch.
And, and the sheet you're looking at now, could you just describe it really quickly and then mark it as A?
A4, please. That is first floor plan.
And I, I have a feeling you're about to flip to another one. We'll just start off with marking that one as A5. So I don't have to.
Second floor plan. A5, so that all of this work is new, built again above the existing, existing house, not built over the garage portion. The idea though would be to rebuild the garage roof so that its roof slope more closely matches the other roof slope. Existing ranch house has a very, very low roof pitch, and that would be steepened a bit. One of the design considerations of the house is to run the roof parallel with the street and to avoid the sort of gable towards the street McMansion look, which is something that we intentionally tried to avoid here. It sort of, I think decreases the impact of the house towards the street. I think those are the critical drawings I, I, I have, unless there are other questions.
Again, just because I myself have been confused and gone back and forth a couple of times here, the plan for this house is to move, you know, you're adding a porch to the front. You're adding a bay window to the front. And because of the way the garage is being constructed with the pitch of the roof, the existing side yard setback as to that garage changes because the pitch of the roof has changed.
The right now, this roof, for the existing, and you'll see that on the streetscape, this roof right now has a very, very low pitch. So we're, we're making that, that pitch a little steeper to match the other, the other roofs. But that gable end wall-
But that end wall is not actually moving.
Is, is not moving. And in fact, we'll keep the wall that's there. We're only building above the plate, the, sort of the triangle that the roof sits on.
Thank you.
So by, by doing the front porch, you're increasing the non-conformity by less than a foot. And by doing the garage, you're increasing the non-conformity by less than a foot.
That is, that is what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
So the, the other issue, sorry, just, this is confusing. You're right, though. Here's the 49-foot setback, so this whole second floor is in the setback, right?
Right, right, correct, yeah.
And then the porch in the front, the little bump out and the garage, which the setback increases for the soffit, right? Because you're, you're maintaining the detail in less than the house and your side yards.
On, on this elevation, you can actually see where, you know, there's the roof that we're rebuilding. So only this portion of the roof is being rebuilt from there down. That wall is, we're retaining the existing wall.
Since I, I don't know if we, have we looked at this one yet before? I just want to have this one marked as A6.
Okay.
Unless, I, I dare to suggest if the board has any more questions, because I, again, I apologize for my own confusion on, on some of this stuff. But I think Derek there in summarizing it did the best job of explaining the, the relief that's being requested.
I'll make my normal comment about lighting. You'll have lighting presumably on the porch that you're extending. Light sources must not be visible from, off the property. No, no light spillage off the property.
Yes, completely agree to, to follow that, that condition.
You have lighting on the garage as well?
We would, we would actually like to put a recessed light in the soffit above each garage door.
You'll have recessed light?
Yes, recessed lights. And, and in fact, we're implementing the same thing for the porch.
Time to go on and off as the door opens, or?
Haven't thought about that yet, but they certainly could.
Well, I, I hate people leaving their garage lights on all night. It's bad energetically and it spoils the dark. Okay.
It's kind of hard to see the driveway. And it almost looks like there isn't one, but I just looked at the picture. Are you moving that in some way? Or you, it looks almost in that picture like it's-
Where the driveway comes in from the street is unchanged. And then halfway to the house, it gets wider to the left. Again, where that screen porch is now, there's only screen porch there, so there's pavement. There's flagstones there now. But we would make that pavement so that we have pavement for the full width of the two, two garage doors.
We don't have any impervious service, surface issues here? I guess we looked at that.
Excuse me, yeah, there is, they'll have to comply with the stormwater management ordinance, but I don't think they're increasing over 400 square feet of net new impervious because they applied for a building permit and a couple of months ago, we found these other issues, but they had already done that analysis. So my recollection says they're okay. If they're not, they'll have to deal with it, but, but they will.
Do we have any, any questions? Is anyone in the audience here to address this case? No? Okay, have you told us all you want to confuse us with?
We have a couple of secret slides of more confusing information.
Oh, I thought we were going to turn one of them. Call it A7.
Thank you.
Okay, so let us go into executive session. What is your pleasure? What are your concerns? No comment?
I have a question, I have a question. Did you design the house to the right of this one?
No.
You didn't?
Mr. Kennedy, I know you don't have a planner, but do you want to make some argument about the C2 standard?
I, I do, of course. And I, I've been accused by other boards of stepping in the shoes of a planner. I will summarize. First off, there, from the testimony you heard, it's, the, the application should not have a detriment to the neighborhood. You heard testimony that the existing wall for the garage is actually being respected, but being able to change the roof line actually more aesthetically and, and consistent with the, the types of planning reasons that the town is liking, looking to promote in, in the master plan allows for better use of that space without, with a very de minimis increase in that setback, side setback variance. One that we, you know, the testimony did not show any, any detriment to the public good, let alone substantial detriment. We also, by granting the prevailing front setback variance are able to allow this house to be expanded in a way that makes it more usable to, to a, a family without having to relocate it back considerably from where it is now. To, to actually comply with the prevailing yard setback would involve removing the home. And you know, we saw that red dotted line down the middle of it. That's where it would have to be moved back to actually comply. That would be a considerable detriment both to the, to the applicant and would not promote the use of this property as, as the applicant is, is attempting to, to do. So these are both appropriate for the neighborhood without, with, without providing anything more than a, a de minimis, I, I would hope, negative impact to, either to surrounding properties or to the intention of, of the, of the zoning.
And your C2 is an appropriate assignment, it seems to me. We've conditioned that with the lighting condition and, and as always, the drainage issue. You've changed the garage roof and things of that sort.
We didn't talk about trees. No tree, no trees will be touched.
No trees are there. And you know, there are regulations, if they take a tree down, they have to replace it.
Certainly takes-
The arborist in principle lets them put in a two-inch counter.
Right. I'd rather they keep the tree to be here.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I move, we accept this.
So we have a motion to accept with conditions. Is there a second to that motion? We have a second to the motion. Can you call the roll for us then, according?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenemog?
Yes.
Mr. Valdanyes?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Here.
Thank you, it's approved.
Thank you.
Good, thanks. All right, we come to the last case of the evening, which is 183 Jefferson Road. And it carries the case number Z1818-567. And this is C2 for porch. I'll get Mr. Bridger just to read his comments into the record for us.
And Mr. Bridger, I'll note the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Thank you. Good evening. The owners, William and Denise Hare, are the owners of 183 Jefferson Road, and they are seeking a C2 variance to permit the construction of a screen porch over an existing deck in exception to the required side yard setback. Property is located in the R8 zone. Single-family use, existing single-family use is permitted as of right. Subject lot is complying with respect to the required bulk requirements. The existing property is not complying with respect to the following setbacks. The right side setback requirement's eight feet, the existing's 5.2 feet. And the combined side yard requirement is 20, whereas the existing is 18.2. The applicant is proposing to construct a screen porch over the existing rear yard deck. The deck is currently non-complying with respect to the side yard setback. I could not find any previous record of the deck, the proposed porch, or record of approval for the deck. The proposed porch will align with the existing house and continue the same setback that exists now with the deck. The applicant is also proposing a plus or minus 75 square foot patio, which is permitted as of right. The screen porch is going to require the following variances. The right side yard setback of 5.2 feet and the combined side yard setback of 18.2 feet. And again, they're requesting consideration under the C2 variance. If you have any questions, we'll try to answer them.
Do we have questions?
Thank you.
You're on.
Mr. Hare, I'll swear you in. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I have, do you all hear me all right? I have two expert witnesses here. Why don't you push this? Oh, I have two expert witnesses here. Joseph Koma, the architect, who's designed the screen and porch, and J.P. Puman of Hopewell Builders, who would be building this. And so, let me get, oh, do you need to swear them in first?
If they're going to testify?
If there's any questions and-
All right, well, we'll wait then, we'll see if there's any need to give testimony.
Okay, so my name is Bill Hare. I live at 183 Jefferson Road. I've been there about nine years and a month. My wife and I are seeking this C2 hardship variance to replace a deck with a screen and porch. As Mr. Bridger said, that deck, I guess there wasn't a permit for it, but it was there when we bought the house. So we need the variance because the side of our house and the deck are within the eight-feet property line setback about five feet from the neighbor's driveway. And on the, on the side of the house. So, and I'm going through the application here and trying to answer some of the points that were raised in that. But if you need to interrupt me, just go ahead. So the existing use and the proposed use, I think what they, they differ in that the deck is being converted into a screen and porch, a single-story, and it dimensions about 30 feet in width and about 13 feet in depth. Looking at the zoning variance regulations, it requires that we prove certain positive and negative reasons. So looking at the positive reasons, I think we're required to prove that the proposed deviation has benefits that outweigh the detriments and that the proposal is better for the community than the zoning requirement. So here with our proposal, the detriment is, at issue is this eight-foot setback and that we'd be approximately five feet from the setback. I'm sorry, we'd have a five-foot setback from the property line. So I, I see that the benefits are, and this was when we were working on this, the toughest part, at least to me in the beginning, was trying to imagine what the roof line would look like. Because you have this side of the house, we have a one-story bathroom study that has been there as, as forever, I guess, since the house was built. And it's got a, I guess, a tar roof. And trying to figure out how you tie in the roof line with that. And our architect came up with the idea of having a metal roof that's L-shaped, so it's continuous on the back of the house and the side of the house. And I think the drawing at page 14 may show that. So by having the side of the existing study bathroom be continuous with the side of the, the screen and porch, we can have the roof line be continuous along the side of the house, which I think will look a lot nicer. And then have it, that would be the short part of the L, and then the long part of the L would go across the back of the house. So the continuous roof line over the porch and the study bathroom extension is, is something that we believe is a benefit. So, and that gives, at least in, in our opinion, better visual effect by the continuity of the, it would be the southernmost wall compared to a jagged effect if we didn't have, didn't get the variance. So we also have to talk about the, the negative reasons that must be proven that are not causing substantial detriment to the public good nor substantially impairing the intent and purposes of the zoning plan. So here, we believe there would be a de minimis change to the existing structure as seen by our neighbors. Currently, we have this side, the side of the house, there's a study and the bathroom, which is non-conforming. And then the screened-in porch would be replaced in an existing deck. So the change would be, we believe, de minimis except for the screen wall and then the roof, which we think would actually look nice because it's going to be continuous. Did I say enough? And-
I would think so.
Any, you guys have any questions? It almost seems a little bit simple compared to the stuff I've heard tonight, but-
But I will raise my normal concerns.
Can I, can I answer your questions before you raise them? Because I did watch the video, and so I think I know what to answer. So we're going to have some recessed lightings in, on the inside-
Of the porch.
Of the, of the screened-in porch. We do, I do not think, maybe we would need to have a light over the door to walk in and out. But I can appreciate that the light should be directed down.
And, and the, and the sore screen, so that you, you just don't want to be a nuisance to the neighbors.
My neighbor is his sister, and so we're good friends. So the last thing I want to do is, is-
You don't want to violate that situation.
Yeah, and, and there's a street light across the road from my bedroom window that I keep trying to figure out how to tape stuff to my window so it's not shining my light in my eyes all night long. So I completely understand where you're coming from.
22 rifle will take care of it.
Well, I've thought about it, but-
Mr. Trump will let you violate.
Well, I, I don't know. But not with a bump stock, at least. There will be no trees cut down. And it's, it's just not that part of the yard. It's replacing an existing deck. And drainage-
Well, that, you've increased the roof area, so you've got some drainage issues. And again, all you need to be sure of is that you don't drain onto neighboring property. As long as you've got a nice pervious surface and the water sinks in, there's no problem.
It goes to the backyard, which is what it does already anyway, because the, but yes.
Yeah.
Did I anticipate the questions that y'all were going to ask?
If I hadn't asked them, you would have never thought.
Well, I did, I did watch the video. Mr. Bridger said I should watch the video of one of y'all's past sessions. I noticed there were some questions about lighting.
Yeah, okay.
So...
You answered my unanswered question. Do we have questions? Any concerns, if not a motion and a second?
Motion approved with conditions.
Wait, did you open it to public comment? Is there anybody in the public?
Oh, sorry. Do you want to make a comment? No. So we have a motion that adopts the conditions we've already placed. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll show.
Which of you is doing it? You are. Okay, so can you call the roll for us then, Claudia?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenemog?
Yes.
Mr. Valvanes?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you, is approved.
Okay.
Thank you all very much. I feel bad that Joseph and JP had to come and didn't get to say anything, so...
I do, I do have a question that has nothing to do with this. How do you account for the fact that the numbers switch sides? In other words, it's, I was driving down the road to look and expecting you to be on the left-hand side and all of a sudden, the odd numbers are on the other side.
On Jefferson?
Yep.
The odd numbers, they are on the left-hand side, is it, but it's, isn't that the whole way or? Oh, it's because they merge with Moore and, because you know, Jefferson and Moore, right, merge right after my house. So I don't know, and then it becomes Jefferson, so then is it right-hand side is?
If you go lower down, never mind.
Oh, that's interesting.
But, but it's true, 169 Jefferson is on the other side of the road.
It's, really?
Go look.
169?
I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, now I'm going to be really curious.
We are adjourned, right?
Thank you.
I mean, I should say sixty-nine.
They're here, okay. Okay, yeah, sounds good, thank you.